Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the January 15, 2019 Planning Board Meeting. My apologies that we're starting a couple of minutes late and I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Welcome to 2019. So, the first item on the agenda is a Master Plan Steering Committee update. Michelle, did you attend the last?
I did not. I was suffering from the flu.
Okay. George, you're here tonight. Why don't you give us an update?
So, the first thing that happened was that, as we see on the screen, it's all a draft. Everything's subject to change. We went through it. We had lots of changes. So, we were basically at this one looking at action items, recommendations for action items. And hopefully that we could get through all of the recommended action items. It was special, not necessarily by the end of the evening. And that was a pipe dream. We didn't even come close. We did try to be in the effort to, so, leading into these, take another crack at that. Who knows when the next could hit that? Kathy just sent me the email around tonight. I'm trying to schedule the next meeting. So, most of it was, had to do with land use. And a lot of it was focused on what's going on in the center of town. What does our downtown mean? How are we defining our downtown? Where we want our downtown to look at is downtown, the downtown business district, is it the neighborhood district? Where does it start? Where does it end? I'm not sure we came to the definitive conclusions, but thought firmly on that. That's a pretty tough one. I think that's probably the highlight of the meeting.
Okay. So, were any decisions made on any pieces of the action items you talked about?
There was some agreement on some things. So, to her credit, and credit is due, and he came through an awful lot of recommendations. Most of which were only received.
Okay.
There were some, but we've just got an awful long way to go.
Okay. Okay. Sounds like we may not be on track to finish on time.
Um, maybe. We'll see.
Okay. All right. Amy, you want to add to that?
No, I agree with what George said. And the next meeting will be January 24th, the Steering Committee meeting. So, we did get through land use. We're going to try to go through the rest of them. And we might stay a little later if we have to.
How late are your meetings going?
They're always seven to nine.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And it's going to be at the library on the 24th. And, yeah, it was just land use. There are a couple of things that I think the Planning Board needs a little bit of input on. So, I was hoping we could go through it sometime tonight because there were some bigger discussions that we really couldn't get into if we were going to get through all the action items, like smart growth and inclusionary zoning. And there are different Planning Board action items that I think we should discuss before we get to the meeting on the 24th. Because they're on the board.
We have some time right now. So, and we have your, one of your fellow, two of your fellow committee members here. So, why don't we take up what we can before our next action, our next item on the agenda has to start?
Okay. Well, the first one that was on the land use was smart growth. And I had done some research on it. And I had read some other local planning boards. Hudson and Shrewsbury had just done their master plans. So, I kind of looked into seeing what they did. And I looked up, we're above our 40B number. You have to be above 10 percent. And we're about 12 percent. And Hudson is two. So, it was recommended that they just use the inclusionary bylaw because that would keep you most likely above the 10 percent. They didn't go with smart growth. But what's on ours is smart growth, which is something called 40R, I think, that we'd have to adopt. And that says it's high-density housing. And 25 percent of it would be affordable. But it also gives the rights for the applicants to bypass a lot of the zoning bylaws to give us that 25 percent. So, I felt in Northborough, where we're above our 10 percent, we didn't really need smart growth. And somebody asked questions about smart growth. And they wanted the consultants and maybe Kathy to come back at the next meeting with more of a discussion about smart growth because people didn't know enough about it to say yes or no. It came off, and it went back on. So, I guess at the Planning Board meeting tonight, I want to talk about smart growth. So, when we go next week, next meeting, that we'll have an idea on what it means for Northborough.
So, I can tell you that one of my concerns with the 40R and the ability to bypass some of the bylaw stuff is what is it specifically that developers would be able to bypass? You know, because we've worked really hard to put zoning and bylaws and building bylaws in place in town. And to permit developers to come in and go in under 40R and bypass some of what we've worked really hard to put into place, that would be concerning to me. So, I think in order for me as one of five on the board to be able to offer a suggestion or an opinion on it, I'd need to know what is it that's going to be bypassed?
Right. And Kathy might know more.
Do you know? 40R?
Well, 40R really isn't a bypass situation like 40B is. And typically with a 40R, and that number, 40R, is attributed to, it's Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40R. And there are, there's financing attached to it. The state will provide the community school money based on how many students you believe are going to be generated by a 40R development. But a 40R in general, I mean, I don't have, I'm not prepared tonight to talk about 40R. It's, I mean, there's consultants that just do 40R. It's very complicated. But in general, it's usually a town invites a developer to say, "We would like you to come and do a 40R. We've determined that this area of town would work for a higher density." And again, there's a range of density depending on the size of your town, depending on the size of the property that you're looking at, you know, that you want to rezone as a 40R district. And there's, like I said, you know, there's financing from the state. So, there's carrot and sticks as to whether or not a community would want to entertain a 40R. Typically, though, a 40R is based around public transportation. And it's not anything right now that we have in our community as far as, you know, a train station. However, there are other criteria that the town could probably meet. But I think in the bigger context of the master plan, as everything in the master plan is, is it's a recommendation. It's a suggestion that this is something, in order to accomplish this goal, you might want to do this, this, and this, or one of these, or all of these, in order to accomplish that goal. So, talking about in the land use section of the master plan, and that's primarily, that's all we got through the other night at the Steering Committee meeting. So, there's several suggestions that are being made as potential recommendations or action steps. Taking a look at, doesn't, you know, stipulate that this is where the town has to go at all. Because, I mean, again, everything that's coming out of the master plan are recommendations. So, whether or not, you know, the town then moves forward with implementing that, that's the whole next phase of the master plan. But some of the, you know, tried and true methods in Massachusetts are, you know, a 40R district, inclusionary zoning, which this town once did have an inclusionary zoning bylaw. We don't have it anymore. But it's something that the town may want to take a look at.
For people who don't know what that is, could you explain it?
Inclusionary zoning is a specific zoning bylaw that, again, you set criteria. And you set a base of, just as an example, I'll say, any new subdivision that comes in that's five or more lots, 10 percent, 20 percent, 25 percent. You know, you pick a number based on an evaluation you're going to do. The bylaw would specifically state, you know, X percentage of units have to be reserved as affordable units. And then you define what that affordability is. In inclusionary zoning, you don't have to go by what the state does with the 40B. You can look anywhere from, you know, 60, 50 percent of the median income all the way up to 120 percent of the median income. So, it's a way for a town to, every development going forward is going to have an affordable component to it. And you determine, you know, from the start. It's not based on each development. But the bylaw would specifically state, you know, what it is that you're looking for, the percentage. The bylaw that we had probably back in the late '90s, early 2000s was 10 percent. So, basically, you know, it was one unit for, you know, starting off with a five-unit subdivision, you know, because you can't do half a unit. So... And then some communities will allow the developer to, instead of building an affordable unit, they can donate. And again, it's based on a formula. It's like an impact fee. They, you figure out what the value of a unit is. And then the developer has to put that money into an affordable housing trust. That's one method. That's one way you can do inclusionary zoning. I think there was a third one that we talked about.
Missing middle?
The missing middle is a term that's given to, again, the, not necessarily people that are making 80 percent of the median income. But the missing middle is basically the group of people that have been shut out of the housing market. And so, it doesn't, it's not, you're not looking at your lower income, and you're not looking at your higher income. You're really looking at middle income for the community. And so, then there are ways through, again, your zoning, most likely inclusionary zoning, that you would, you know, could address it that way. So, again, these are just suggestions. And as Amy had said, you know, the group asked the consultant to come back with some additional information at the next meeting about those programs.
Okay. So, what kind of guidance are you looking for for the board on this if the consultant hasn't come back?
Well, I just wanted to learn more as a board. And what did we feel that the town needed? And I guess there's going to be a public outreach in February to the 12th or the 13th, somewhere around there. And something that had been talked about too was, what was it, a visual survey?
Yeah, it's called a visual preference survey. We've actually done those before back when we first did design guidelines. I don't know if you remember that, Michelle. We walked around town. And then we did sort of like the do's and the don'ts, and what did people prefer. But a visual preference survey, we talked a lot about design at the last Thursday's Master Plan meeting. And whether it was for the downtown, the town in general, industrial districts, commercial districts. And are we talking about something more than just the physical building? Are we talking about, you know, the more than just the design of the actual building? And so, the sort of, as they try to do with each one of the public forums, you know, what do you, we call it an icebreaker. But they might do, actually, I think what they were directed, that they were going to do a visual preference survey just to, you know, sort of introduce that concept to people at the next public forum. So, that, I, we don't have a date yet. As Amy said, it'll either be February 12th or the 13th. I don't know what school it will be at yet. That's all just in the planning stages right now with, you know, myself and the school department. But we'll announce that just over the next couple of days where that meeting will be. And that, the purpose of that public forum is to go through, again, they're in draft. It'll go to be, to go through the recommendations, just as we did at the last public forum when we went through the goals. And so, it'll be go, you know, we'll do breakout tables. And we'll be specifically talking about the recommendations.
Okay. Kathy, what might help at the next Master Plan meeting is if you explain like you did tonight about, to the general, the Master Plan Committee, because a lot of them aren't even familiar with land use.
Yeah, they, actually, our consultants are going to bring in some, I don't know whether it'll be printed material or something that they're going to send out ahead of time. But, yeah, we've asked them for specific information about the smart growth districts or the 40R districts. And I think some inclusion, I think they were going to do inclusionary zoning too.
And we could even pull out our old inclusionary bylaw to show what it was.
Yeah. And there's a whole website that the state has put together on smart growth. But, you know, they're going to, they were going to reach out to their land use folks, you know, back at the office to get us some more information on that.
So, I think it would be helpful to have that information, you know, general base knowledge before I, at least for me, before I make any opinion on this one way or the other. But Anthony or Carrie, either of you have anything to add or any thoughts on smart growth at this point?
Well, my first comment is, is it really fit in our town where we don't have a lot of? Because it looks like, it sounds like it would be applicable for towns that have big tracts of land that could be developed potentially where we really don't have that. So, I don't see how any of the smart growth or 40R would be a good fit here. But I would have to look further into it.
It does kind of feel like we need more infrastructure in place for something like that and more land.
Yeah.
What about you?
Where did the recommendations come from? Was it someone on the committee, Amy, or how did those come to be?
Kathy might know. We were just emailed the recommendations.
Yeah, just like with the goals, the consultant, I mean, that's what we've hired them for. So, you know, they prepared a list of draft goals. And then, you know, the committee went through those, you know, over several meetings. And then we did the public forum on them. And then the same thing with the recommendations is that, you know, based on the goals then that, you know, everybody agreed to at the last, you know, two meetings ago now, then they put together a series of draft recommendations. And then all of the committee members have reviewed those and provided their comments back to the consultants. Some have been added, some, you know, some new ones have been added. Some have been taken away or deleted, you know, based on the consensus of the Steering Committee. And like I said, all that we got through, I don't want to say all because it was a very good discussion, I thought, was we got through the land use recommendations.
And at the public outreach, all the, anybody who wants to come from the public will be able to have comments on what they think of all these recommendations.
Yep.
And then we'll probably talk about them again after.
Oh, yeah. Because they're still, they're going to the public forum, just as we did it with the goals. They're going to the public forum as drafts. So, the goal is, is at the next meeting, the 24th, is that the committee will get through the rest of the recommendations. And then those will go as drafts, you know, draft recommendations to the public forum.
Actually, that's where it'd be good for the consultants to let everybody know what smart growth and inclusionary is because the public is, will be asking us those questions. So, that'd be good. Thank you.
Thank you. So, that, okay. George, anything you want to add to the smart growth discussion at this point?
No, not here.
Okay. All right. I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda because I know that we, everyone's here for that, right, Kathy?
I don't know what these, I don't, I don't know.
Is Marshall Gould doing this?
Yes. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant the people that were sitting here. I don't know what they're here for.
Oh, assuming that they're observers.
But, um, yes, there's two people.
Thank you. We'll see you at the next meeting if something happens in between, which it sounds like it will, which I think is scheduled for February 5th. Okay. We'll see you next time. Thanks for coming in.
Bye, George.
All right. So, the next item on the agenda, which I want to apologize, we're starting a little late. Review of 329 to 333 West Main Street, ZBA application with Michael J. Scott, EEW DA Design Group, and Marshall Gould Esquire from Gould in Edinburgh. Good evening. Who's presenting?
Hi. So, Marshall Gould from Gould in Edinburgh in West Brom. And I don't know some of you, so welcome to the board. And with me, I have Mike Scott from the WDA Engineering and WDA Design Group in Northborough. And this is a piece of property in Northborough, 329 and 333 West Main Street. This property, for those of you who know the history, used to be Zeko's property. And for those who don't know Zeko, they were a waste company that would deal with industrial waste. And they would deal with hazardous waste. And the current buildings there now is the building that they built. There formerly were other buildings there before. And that's where Zeko used to run their business. And then they sold to, they were bought, I should say, by a company, Metcalf, was it Metcalf or Metcalf and Eddy?
Metcalf and Eddy.
Metcalf and Eddy. And then Metcalf and Eddy eventually sold their business out to the company that is now owner of the property. And they have not been doing hazardous waste while they were there. But they are industrial waste company. So, they used to use this property. And there have been, for close to 50 years, there have been many other tenants at the property that have been, right now, for instance, is a company that does tree removal, going back to 1900. There was a welling company there. And there have been numerous other businesses that have been there over the years. The welling company is the longest tenant. They have been there since, I think, 47 years now. They've been there since the early '70s. So, we now have a gentleman who lives in the area, Kevin Lattabini. His business is presently in Marlborough. And he is looking to be the purchaser of the property. And he wants to move his business from Marlborough to Northborough. And he is a landscaper, but he's not the type of landscaper that you can probably describe it better than me, that deals primarily with chemicals. He is a little more green as a company than some of the companies you may see out of the house where they go out just with their sprayers. And they try to keep everything green by spraying pesticides and fertilizers every time they go out. So, he's more of a commercial, as well as some residential, landscape maintenance. And he takes care of the property. Very grateful is business between himself and his dad. His business has been around for close to 50 years, I believe. And he'd like to come up to Northborough, which is, I mean, where he lives. So, the type of use that he would make of the property, he would be using the area that the current owner of the property has been using. But as opposed to the type of use that the present owner has been making as an industrial waste company and transport company, I brought pictures that I had previously shared with the building inspector, and I think with Kathy and Fred. This is typical of the transportation that the present owner used to use at the property.
Thank you.
So, they would bring these vacuum trucks where they would, they would basically vacuum out anything from septic systems to drainage pitches. And no matter what was in there, they would pick it up. They would bring it back. And then they would keep it until they had enough to fill trucks. And then they would eventually bring it out to the site where they would dispose of it.
Sorry, let me interrupt. You're saying this is what's there now, or this is the most recent tenant that was there?
The most recent tenant that they are, who, I represent the seller of the property. The buyer Kevin Lattabini, unfortunately couldn't hear it tonight. Something came up. The news just kind of was able to hear. Mike has been working very closely with Kevin Lattabini. And I've had quite a few conversations with him myself.
Okay.
So, this is indicative of the use that's been there. What's going to be there is more a typical landscape business. Mike has worked with it more. He can describe the type of use. So, there will be certain chemicals there. He's going to have, same as this company had a repair person for the vehicles. They had, they're grease monkey at the site. Kevin also has someone who will take care of the mowers and the trimmers and his vehicles. But that's all going to be maintained either inside the building or a paved area. Right now, there's been storage outside in areas that are not paved. And those areas will be paved. So, there's a lot less likely that anything could go into the groundwater. And that's pretty much what we are looking for. We met with the building inspector. It was determined that it is a non-conforming use. But in learning about the Kevin Lattabini that's going to be using the property compared to the way all state and before that definitely using the property, it's a much less intensive use and much less risky use based on what's going to be there compared to what the present and former owners will be doing with the property.
Is Fred, is this coming to groundwater?
It is.
Okay.
Eventually. It's not scheduled yet.
This is the one that we thought we were going to have?
Right. There was some information that I had requested that wasn't able to be submitted by the meeting this month. And so, the meeting was canceled.
Okay. All right. There. You, would you like to add to this?
Well, other than that, Kevin, we met at the site today. Again, he's been, he's had PNS on this property now for probably close to a year. And has been trying to get as much information out of the owner and seller as he can about the property itself, the building, not so much the historic uses that Marshall described. And that's one of the reasons we didn't have all the information that Fred was looking for for groundwater. We haven't been able to get a lot of data from the seller. So, Kevin, the potential buyer, is doing a bunch of his own due diligence at his own expense. And he's taking a little out there. He's going to line people up. So, but he's very interested in the site. He wants it. It would be, as Marshall described, a less intensive use, but similar sort of powers and smaller equipment. But people driving in and out of the garage, they would be using the garage space for the maintenance of the equipment, storage of pesticides and fuels, cleaners, any of the chemicals would be internal to the building. They would have equipment outside as the other users have. It's a, you know, it's a five to six day a week operation. It's daytime operation, similar to the other user. And he likes the location because he wants to be an owner and not be a tenant where he is in Marlborough.
If I could, there were two other important factors that I wanted to bring up. One is the buyer had quite a few contingencies before he bought the property. Obviously, these type of permits are among the contingencies. But also, an inspection was done, and the septic system needed to be upgraded. So, Kevin has undertaken to, he's going to put in a new septic system there. He's going to just go on a upgrade and it's there. He's doing it all new. Or the replacement system for the, and the other, and the other part that's quite important is, it was subject to a 21E. And knowing the site history, it wasn't enough to do what's on the Phase 1. So, he and the lender wanted to go further. So, they did a very thorough Phase 2 21E inspection. And they did most of their paperwork up through October. And in November, they limited it. And they did more groundwork and some moorings. And it came, the results came out very good. There were no reportable conditions. And there were no unsafe conditions.
Okay. Okay.
So, that was very encouraging. And that was one of his single biggest contingencies because he wanted to make sure, I shouldn't say we, because I represent himself. He wanted to make sure he wasn't buying a problem under 21E and that there would be no problem to the groundwater. So, there were monitoring wells out there. They tested the monitoring wells. Everything was within the limits allowed by law, no reportable conditions. And in general, he and Kathy were very happy with it.
No. That's the active participant in our audience tonight. It's all good. Don't worry. So, I was going to ask, are they storing chemicals on site there now?
Are they what?
Are they storing any chemicals on site today? Do you know?
I'm certain that, I know the companies that are there, they probably are. Well, the welder, I'm sure, has to use certain solvents.
Right.
And I believe those are qualified as chemicals. But you're asking if the seller is right now, the answer is no.
Okay.
Sellers still parts their trucks there occasionally because they have business both east of Northborough and west of Northborough. And so, with their fully commissioned job, there's occasionally parked vehicles there. They try to cop the labor front, so it's not going to concern the workers in the back. And I think that's the answer to this.
Okay. Perfect. Michelle, any questions?
Yeah. Would the seller or applicant be willing to share the 21E report with staff so they can review it?
Yeah, we would.
Okay. Do you know what the hours of operation are? Because I know the landscapers usually like to get out really early. So, is it just going to be like, is it a 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. or is it?
I haven't asked Kevin. But landscapers usually start, you know, depending upon the season. In the summertime, when it's, when the sun comes up early, early, they usually start early. They get out early. But I don't know if that's, I'm not sure will come up before the ZBA. And they will ask, and the ZBA can always put conditions on it. Kevin isn't here. And like I say, I'm not his attorney. But he's been in my business for 50 years and never had a problem. I ask if he was involved in lawsuits and if he was in the process.
Okay. And my only other concern would be just... Okay. And my only other concern would be just seeing landscapers. I even had one recently in my neighborhood a couple of years ago. I know that there's a lot of tree stumps and, you know, cutting a brush and stuff like that. Concerned about whether he's going to do any composting and stuff. Is it just straight, we're going to take the trucks out, and we're going to fertilize people's lawns and cut them? Or what does he do when he takes trees down and brush? How does he dispose of that? Is it on the property, or how's he going to deal with that?
I can probably, I'll, yeah, because honestly, I did not ask. I do know, I think the name of the company that's there now is Non-Harm Tree. I have it written here. They do a lot of that. And there were a lot of anything, they cut trees to Marshall cut trees. And they bring them to the site that he can.
Kevin talked, we talked about that a little bit today. He, his business is more commercial landscaping. He does residential, not a tree guy. Obviously, there's tree work involved in landscaping. So, they will bring material to the site, and they're pickups over there putting it. And they will be, they're there presently onsite till Friday evening or Saturday morning. They'll take it to the disposal site that they use in Sterling.
Okay.
So, it's not, there's no composting. There's no exterior storage of materials. The only thing we talked about is that he sometimes will have a small supply of mulch available that he then, obviously, he takes to the site where it's still in. That may be there for days, or there may not be, there'll be periods where it's there and periods where the bylaws are away. But in terms of waste hauling, if you will, they will bring clippings or brush or other ways, vegetative ways, and leave it overnight, or they may even leave it three, four days. But then at the end of the week, it's hauled off to their licensed facility in Sterling. But they don't intend, they won't compost on site. And that's something we talked about with the building commissioner and Fred, that staff being in fire department. None of them want to see that activity, and that's something Kevin intends to do.
Okay. Excellent. Those are my only questions.
Thanks, Michelle. Anthony, any questions?
I'm not certain. Has that property ever, I don't know who to even ask. Has that property ever been permitted for waste disposable or waste management business there?
My understanding of this, and I did do a little work. I was already been practicing law at the time at this start, and I didn't live in Marlborough. And I've lived here for forty-six years. And when I moved to town, there was already multiple businesses. And that's in fact where I first met Mr. Zeko. He owned the building at the time. He was a much smaller businessman at the time. And there were, the welder was there when I first saw that business. And that's how I was first at the company, back in seventy-three when I moved to town. And I was in the journey. I got a call from the welder asking me to come to the property. That's the first time I was ever there. He wanted me to see his business, and his lawyer had retired and wanted a new lawyer. And I remember there were at least three users at the time. And it has since gone through more special permitting for purposes of an expansion that was more to allow office space in there. The other users were already real.
So, then whatever the materials that Mr. Labadini's going to have on the property, you'll have to have new permits for that. There's nothing carrying over from the waste, okay?
And we, I believe you, I think Kathy, like we said it up to all of us, but it was today or yesterday, the fire department's going to have five applications that they have to fill out. And obviously, we go through the ZVA under groundwater. We're going to have to, you know, provide a list of all the chemicals for Fred.
Right.
And I think that may have already been delivered to you.
It was once submitted.
Yeah.
And as well, as Mr. Labadini was pretty thorough, he presented a list of, one of his big years was two thousand and sixteen. So, he presented a list of everything he used during that entire year. And then he also provided a list of what he typically uses. So, he does not, his business is not, he uses fertilizer or pesticides or chemicals. He has a licensed pesticide or chemicals person on site that's working on it. And so, he is, he's not just a flat by night landscaper who goes out and mows lawns and finishes trees. It's a long time business, and they're very professional.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Anthony. Carrie?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So, this is a contractor's yard. That's the non-conforming use?
The interpretation by the building inspector was, it depends on the definition of contractor's yard. Generally, especially if you do with equipment there, that's the plan they're using. It is a contractor's yard.
Okay. And previously, it was industrial waste and disposal?
Yes.
So, and do you know how long ago they were operating? Is that recently they're operating in that capacity? Or is that from the beginning of time, or what's the timeline for that?
They, I think from the time that there was a purchase and sale agreement, they did not have their family and their teams working there all day. But they had two people from the company, one covering east and one covering west, who would come in there. And the last time I was there was in the fall. It was late summer, maybe September or October, when I met with them. And they were in the process, hoping that this would close, so organizing everything that they could take away. And when I was there, there was one of these trucks out front. And while I was there, one of the drivers came in, he left his car, and he drove the truck out. So, that's the last that I'm aware, but I haven't asked them specifically.
Sorry, I didn't understand your answer. So, they were operating as an industrial waste and disposal firm just last spring? Or that's how they were operating in the?
Fall.
In the fall. Okay. Great.
That's not true.
I'm sorry. This is not a public hearing.
Okay. So, during that, as of recent as last fall, they had hazardous materials on site?
Well, they had one of these trucks there that had come in the year before. And I had to be there at seven o'clock in the morning with one of the people. And the driver came in, and while I was there, he drove the truck off and left his car.
Okay. So, just as recent as last fall, they had permits for hazardous waste and all of that?
I presume so. I did not ask to see that front at the time.
I'm just curious, because if this is asking to have hazardous waste, and we're trying, and it's non-conforming, non-conforming, I'm wondering, to what capacity did they have hazardous waste?
When you say hazardous waste, you have to understand, they were an industrial waste hauler. So, there were a lot of things that come under the definition of hazardous waste. And most of their businesses, you can see by the type of truck, these called vacuum trucks.
Yeah, vacuum trucks. They clean sewers and storm drains. That's what ACV and viral was more of, or recently, I think.
Right.
Okay. So, in terms of chemicals?
Zeko was the one that dealt with true hazardous waste. And they would be called to clean up hazardous waste sites, and Zeko was doing that.
Okay.
ACV was not dealing, unless you know something different than I. I don't think ACV was in the business of being called to hazardous waste sites.
Okay.
It was industrial waste. There's a difference.
Oh, okay. So, I'm just curious, because just in the list of hazardous materials here, I just wanted to clarify, how was it operating before versus how would it operate in this proposed application? The other question I had was in regards to the chemicals. In terms of it exceeding minimum thresholds, does it, with these numbers given here, does that exceed? How do we know if that exceeds minimum thresholds or not?
Well, there are no minimum thresholds. It's just that they have to disclose whatever they're going to contain on the property, and then provide adequate containment of those chemicals to prevent any potential hazard to the groundwater supply. So, there's no limit if for the groundwater advisory committee. There are limits with the fire department, and that's what triggers permits.
Oh, okay. So, that's what the fire department's saying?
Yes.
I was just reading through that letter, and just wanted to make sure I understood what that was saying. Okay. And then, so will it just have fuel, fertilizer, things like that on site? Okay. And so, this has not gone to groundwater?
Has not.
And you don't know, it hasn't, it's not scheduled for groundwater?
I'm waiting for the material that's been requested.
Okay. So, and this is a flood zone?
No, I don't.
It's not a flood zone? Okay.
It's ground protection, but not a flood zone. And there's a wetland system on the north side of the road. And this has been part of the comment I had last night discussing. So, it's being permitted through the conservation commission as well.
So, oh, okay. So, last night conservation commission said this was all, this all looked good?
No, they, they didn't say it was fine. They just continued hearing pending the zone. No reason to close the hearing at this point.
And you're, you're going to zoning next week?
It's scheduled for January twenty-two Tuesday.
Okay.
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay.
Okay. So, if there were, I don't know. So, you'll, when you cover runoff, does fertilizer there? When it rains and we get, you know, a huge amount of rain, and the fertilizer starts to runoff into the wetlands, conservation has already taken a look?
The storage of that fertilizer will be inside the building. Right.
Okay. Got it.
That will be, that's not an issue.
You have to start with the premise that there's certain minimum containment requirements for chemicals and fertilizers and things like that. A lot of what they're going to store has to be stored within, as Fred said, very specific containment facilities, so that if it does rain, it's not exposed to weather elements and doesn't enter the groundwater. And that's part of the groundwater advisory committee's job, is to make sure that those containments are part of the site plan and will be constructed, the site plan, the building rather, will be constructed in accordance with the site plan, so that that concern has been addressed.
Oh, thank you. That makes sense. So, if you could let us know when that's scheduled, so that if we wanted to attend, is that something Kathy could let us know?
We posted it with the town clerk's office.
Okay. Great. That'd be good. That'd probably answer a lot of my other questions, just in terms of how they're stored, and if they were stored previously, or if this is new types of things coming to the property.
So, I think, Carrie, most likely, and yes, we'll notify everybody when the groundwater meeting's been scheduled. But I'm, I'm assuming here, but I think what's going to happen is, you know, the ZVA will open the hearing next Tuesday, a week from tonight. And then, the applicant will make a presentation, and then would ask for a continuance, because they will have not met with groundwater at that point.
Okay.
So, I anticipate that it'll, you know, it'll certainly get continued to the February ZVA meeting. But that there will be some discussion next Tuesday evening.
And during that intriguing period of time, Mr. Labadini, you looked at with the fire department, which was like, I believe, is that?
We've already had with, we've already had with the fire department twice. That was.
What I'm talking about for those.
Oh, to try to game off. That was, yeah. The letter came out as a result of one of our meetings. Where they qualified what was going to be on site, what he hoped to have on site in that group.
Okay. Thank you. Then I think I have a lot of my questions that will probably come out of your meeting.
Just to, just to clarify, the groundwater committee is an advisory committee. And so, their meeting is much like tonight's meeting, a public meeting, but not a public hearing. It's not advertised on the newspaper. Butters are not notified. It's a public meeting that they make a recommendation to the ZVA, who then holds the public hearing.
Gotcha.
It operates very similar to the design review committee, where they're advisory.
Makes sense. Good. Amy?
Okay. I know Michelle asked about the hours of operation. I was just wondering about the days. You said five to six days a week. Do you know if it's going to be five? Is it going to be six?
Well, he's, Kevin has told me that they have operated six days a week periodically. He can clarify that at the zoning board, because I'm not going to speak for his business operation. But he has said that they have operated on Saturdays.
Okay.
And they do snow plowing in the winter.
That's what I was going to ask, a question, they do plowing?
If they, as he put it, unnecessary evil.
Yeah. How many trucks does he have?
I don't know if he answers that question.
Okay.
And I don't know if he intends to store all early parts, equipment at this site. Again, that's something I can, I can find out.
Yeah.
He can run it.
Okay. And you mentioned they'd be doing vehicle maintenance there also?
Similar to what's happened in the past, they will, they intend to maintain the trucks inside the garage.
And they do truck washing too?
I don't know that. And I would imagine that that would be problematic in a groundwater disney.
Right. That's what I was saying, because the fertilizers come and go, they're contained, but trucks bring back fertilizers on them.
Sure.
And when you wash that, that can get into the groundwater.
And the work is done in the building, which has a trench drain, which then feeds a storage tank. So, that's, that's a part of the redundant system of containment that's required.
It all goes into a tank?
That's correct. It's then has to be pumped out and taken to a proper disposal site. Just like any other, like any car dealership or any other commercial garage that's in existence. It doesn't, it's not served by sewer. The site is served by onsite, so it has to, has to haul away.
But being on groundwater, it probably even needs extra things, right? Especially outside, but that will all be entered at groundwater, like if there are catch basins or?
When the revised plans are submitted, then the groundwater committee will review it.
And the stormwater system is designed to collect and treat stormwater, plus it's to be treated. Or be included, so it's a condition.
I have a question on zoning. We're saying this is non-conforming use to non-conforming use, and you mentioned a welder there. Do you know how, have you seen how far back the first use went, the welder? Do you know?
Have I seen how far back?
Yeah. Yeah. When he started his business, was it nineteen seventies, do you think?
When I met with him, he said that he has been involved since two thousand and six. The person that I met with, who was my client, when I started practicing in seventy-three, it was Heritage Welding that was there. And this person now owns Heritage Welding, but I think it's actually been sold twice, not just once.
So, the welding started in about the seventies?
I think it started between seventy and seventy-one.
Just because when I looked up, the zoning in Business West has never been industrial. So, to me, even the welding now, today, it might be an unlawful use. He might not even be a lawful use, non-conforming, because you would have to be a welder before the bylaws started in nineteen fifty-five to be considered a non-conforming use in industrial. I'm just.
To answer that question.
Right. But that's a question I would have for the zoning in the ZVA, is how far back did the first use go? Because to be non-conforming, it would have to be before nineteen fifty-five. And if he started in the seventies?
That depends on what the zoning was in fifty-five and what it was.
Right. But it's never been industrial.
There was no such thing as business that's back then.
Right.
And we don't know what the definitions were back then.
I have a copy.
But as I said, this fellow has been, the company that he's involved with has been there. I have his letter that's in seventy-three.
Right. Right. But industrial's never been in that zone. I'm just, it's just a question about non-conforming, how it can go non-conforming to non-conforming, because I've read a lot about non-conforming, because we're, we've been talking about it. And if it started unlawfully, it's not considered non-conforming.
So, Kathy, may I interject and ask a question? My assumption is that the applicant is here this evening pursuant to seven oh three oh five oh, subsection D six, on page seven dash seventeen, for anybody who wants to read it.
Yeah, under the site plan.
Which says that the planning board shall also conduct a technical review of the site plan and submit written comments and recommendations to the zoning board of appeals. So, I just want to make sure that what we're doing is complying with the, with that. And so, in that regard, we do have a site plan draft that has been provided to us. So, is our role here to make recommendations based upon what we know about what may be on site with respect, and as it may apply to the site plan, looking at the existing conditions versus the proposed improvements? Or is it something different than that?
Well, the, first of all, you don't, you don't have to provide comments to the zoning board of appeals. You may. You really kind of take this on a case by case basis over the years. Sometimes you have the ZVA applicant in, sometimes you don't. So, in this particular case, I knew that there would be a lot of interest in this particular property. So, we had the, you know, I scheduled the applicant. So, the, so basically, what you have before you is, you know, the zoning board of appeals application. And the applicant is requesting that the ZVA make a determination that, you know, that this new non-conforming use that they're proposing, you know, is not more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use. So, if the planning board wants to, you know, provide any comments to the zoning board of appeals, that's?
But the way that I read this is that if it's a special permit with site plan review, our guidance is limited to the site plan review, not the special permit questions. So, the propriety of whether or not the special permit should be allowed, or prior non-conforming use should be extended or what have you, is not really what's before us. It's the site plan.
Correct.
As drafted.
Yes.
So, whatever comments we make have to pertain to our opinions as a board regarding the plan, and not our opinions regarding the special permitting process.
Exactly. Exactly. The zoning board of appeals is the one making that decision.
Right.
You, you can provide comments, again, you know, whether you choose to or not, but about the proposed use as far as the site plan. Does the traffic pattern, you know, do you have concerns about the traffic pattern? Do you have concerns about, you know, the, you know, the lighting? I mean, this is a pre-existing building. There, from what I understand, there is going to be additional pavement, which as a town, we prefer that additional pavement, you know, be put where, right now, there's just gravel. But, again. But yes, it's, it's all having to do with the site plan.
Okay, so this being the first time for all of us doing this, I will just, I'll give it a go. And I've reviewed the existing and the proposed amendments to the site plan. I note that you have identified an area for containment of your hazardous waste. I note that you've identified the area that you are going to pave over with bituminous, with asphalt. And I also have noted the changes you're going to make to the parking area, the design of the parking area. So far, based on what you've told us and what you're going to have on-site, sounds okay to me. My only, my only reservations are getting through groundwater, obviously, and making sure that the containment areas, especially for whatever chemicals you're holding on-site, are sufficient in size for what you're going to bring on-site. But I think working with groundwater and the fire department, that those two things are going to happen. So those would be the only things that I would have to say about it in terms of the site plan. Michelle?
So having said that, I noticed that you're a two-story wood-framed building with a concrete foundation. Does anything trigger for this to actually have a sprinkler system in it or no?
Be the fire.
I have no idea.
Is that a question we could ask?
There's no addition to the building.
It's already sprinkled anyways? Okay, good, that was a question I was going to ask. Just having, I chair the design review committee, is this coming before the design review committee?
No, no, there isn't any, there isn't any building renovation or addition that kicks off design review.
Okay, so typically we do a site plan review there and then advise the board on it, so I will just give my feedback and my experience in that. I'd be looking for, can we ask for things like signage and stuff like that on this, or where your lighting is on the building or stuff like that, can we ask in the review?
Can you ask the applicant that, where that's going to be?
I mean, just out of curiosity, are they going to add any additional lighting to the site?
We haven't talked with Kevin, I haven't spoken with Kevin about his intentions to light the exterior in any way. I'm sure he'll put a sign up. I haven't seen any, remember, and there are tenants will come and go.
When you say new sign, at least his business would replace.
Well, with his business. Replace ACV.
ACV residence.
The lettering issue, I don't know, he doesn't intend to put a freestanding sign as well.
Right, so some of the things that I would recommend to have prepared for the ZBA is things like signage. Because if someone's going to do a site plan review, someone's got to ask about signage, right? If there's any additional lighting, oftentimes that we often try to look at how we can protect the neighbors that are behind you, if you're residential behind you, how you can buffer from the residents behind you to the site that you have and give some.
Is there any neighborhood on this one? Is there a neighborhood behind this?
Yeah, there's a.
To the south?
To the.
I believe they are.
To the south.
Sorry, I'm trying to train in my mind, figure out what's.
Yeah.
Old Colonial Road and Buck Hill.
Buck Hill.
So in site, in site plan, we often look at the neighboring properties, not necessarily, you know, if you're on commercial and to your left or your right, but who's behind you if it's a neighboring property, how you can do to create a buffer to protect them from having to look at.
There's an existing wooded buffer at the site right now that's not going to be touched.
Okay.
Thirty to fifty feet.
So I don't really see that on here, but, so I just see the existing building, I see how you labeled the garage spaces. I don't know if there's going to be any additional signage on the buildings, his plans, I would. I would ask for that. I would just, I know that you've got, a lot of you got twenty-two spaces, two are for handicapped. I don't know if you need to have any markings on the concrete driveway to show where trucks are going to come and go in case you have people visiting the site. I assume that you're not going to have many people visiting the site, just for the nature of his business, but he might have a client, so.
Well, it depends on, yeah, it depends on how much space he has versus central tenants.
Okay.
The dance studio is, is or was there upstairs, so that's one of the store tenants.
Okay.
But it, that's a, what we tried to do on the site plan was evaluate the adequacy of parking based on the present tenants as determined by the architectural drawings that he had prepared for the existing building.
Okay.
So we feel there's adequate parking and we tried to rectify the non-conforming aspects of the parking. For instance, where there was parking right up against West Main Street, we didn't have a quiet setback, we eliminated that, so.
So I would just also look to town staff, if there was anything about that, that this applicant could improve on that as far as either lighting or signage that has not been done before, you might want to recommend to the, to the ZBA. Other than that, he's not changing the building at all and there's no building materials or anything, and thank you for replacing the septic system, you know, and.
And he's actually moving some of the spaces from the entry, some of the apartment spaces, the entry, leaving them a way to make it safer.
Okay.
And with Concom, I believe, I wasn't there, but I think we discussed reducing some of the vegetation from better sight lines.
Well, that, we would clean that, that stormwater basin in the Tethys Street will be cleaned out. That was, that's already been permitted by the Concom. The plan that's in front of you shows work in the buffers on related to some additional stormwater, which is a necessity of the state. So that will affect any vegetation or any of the screening on the road, but it will clean out the basin in front, which will help the sight lines exiting the city.
Okay, so if he has additional lighting, I mean, naturally you just want to make sure that all the lighting stays on the property, doesn't affect the butters. And then I haven't been there, I don't know what the buffer is like between the neighboring, the neighbors behind, but you're saying that there's, they're not going to touch it.
There's a little bit of swell there, which is not.
And then I don't know if we're allowed to, I mean, I did make a suggestion that the twenty-one E be shared with town staff. You said that would be okay, but I don't know if we can make that requirement of the site, you know?
I don't know that it necessarily pertains to the site.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's material that we routinely, you know, receive.
And he already spoke about tree stumps composting and storing brush and trees there, that they would not be stored there. And then, can you explain to me the area where you would have on this, where you'd be doing the mulch?
Yeah, it's actually, I think what you're pointing at, the shaded area, that would, that area is not presently paved, there's plenty of storage going on there. He intends to pave a portion of the septic system, it would be just a, a little down the sheet, so that will not be paved over. It's designed to be driven over, it's not going to be paved over. So he would be storing it in that area, and there's two paved bases up on the side of the sheet that will collect the.
So would you say, are these, you know, mulch piles going to be similar to what you see at Zekko's down the street? Those huge mounds of mulch that he has or?
Well, again, I, I'm going to let Kevin answer that question.
Okay.
The quantities of materials, I think there's a, as he described to me, he's not a huge commercial operation. He had, it's a commercial business, but he's not somebody that is dealing with large quantities on the site, that's not his business model. He's not, as he told me today, he's not a true green or he's not a lawn doctor that's out spraying. He's not someone that stores large looking quantities of different chemicals, doesn't store large quantity of mulch.
Right, so if this had been coming before the design review and we had the opportunity and we look at things that are sort of unsightly, and I do consider in a business district to have mounds of mulch sort of unsightly, you know? I don't mind the three at Zekko's, but to go all the way down Main Street and have more, I mean, I would ask for some sort of screening around them.
The nice thing about this site is if you, if you do go by it, the right side, which is the site that will be paved, right side from the street, there's probably, I don't know how tall that stand of our providing, but it's a wall of green, you don't see the site.
So you wouldn't see it, okay.
You might see it from the side if you go past, but you don't see it from the front.
All right, good. All right, so there's a natural buffer there. All right, that's all my comments.
Okay, Amy?
I was looking at the imperious surface. Were those calculations done on the three lots combined or just on the one lot?
Three lots.
Okay, so that's another thing that the applicant is asking for, is that we combine all three lots for one contiguous lot where it, it might have to be three separate applications, it's three separate lots.
If he purchases all three lots, I assume he's going to purchase, yeah, he's going to purchase all three lots under one deed.
It's in the application, it's in the aisle. There's actually a right-of-way that's shown to the right, which is a non, the assessor shows it has no ownership. It's actually in the deed, so he would be purchasing that right-of-way. The town has a record, it's not a public right-of-way, we can't find anything, and we believe someone's going to run title, obviously, before he buys it, but there's no evidence, there's a strip, it's twenty feet wide, it's on the right or the west side. It's presently being used by the owner. The fence line runs down that, that side, so it's actually four parcels. One of them doesn't show up as an assessor's parcel, but it's in the deed.
Okay, that was just my question.
That's it?
My other question, well, there are three permits and I guess we can only talk about the site plan here, so.
Yep.
Okay, Carrie, anything about the site plan?
Well, I was just going to say, non-conforming obviously has a lot to do with the effects on the neighborhood. I'd be interested in what, if we're open to any public comments, if we're willing here with the neighborhood.
It's not a public area, no, they can, they can go to the ZBA.
I would like to make one comment, though, is that I was, watched this selectmen's meeting last night and a couple people spoke and John Cudair said this isn't the right place to speak, to go to the planning board meeting tomorrow night. And because he told them to come here.
I, I thought that he said the zoning board of appeals.
He said tomorrow night.
Amy, this is a public meeting?
Oh, I know, I would have sent it there, I just thought it would be fair if they got to.
It's, we're not taking public comment tonight. The ZBA is the appropriate place for that because that's where, those, that's the deciding body. They're the ones that make the decision on this, not us. We're just going to give a recommendation on the site plan, so.
You don't even have the applicant here tonight.
Right, I don't, it's not appropriate to take any public comments tonight. Anything else?
Oh, actually, so, sorry, I remain confused on one piece. The hazardous waste, you had mentioned hazardous waste stored, so I just wanted to clarify. Previous, under the previous operation, there was hazardous waste storage and use.
Not my client, it's the owner now. My client did not do that.
No, but, so the previous use did have a hazardous waste element?
Either one or two owners before, yes.
So, and, okay.
No.
So that's what I guess I have to figure out.
It was not sorted in ground, but it was sorted in trucks.
Thank you.
Anthony?
I, so I don't know what, so I know we're talking about the site plan, but I'm drifting back to non-conforming, to non-conforming. Can I make a comment?
You can make a comment, but right now we're just trying to figure out if there's anything on the site plan that concerns you.
Okay.
That's what we really need to address with the ZBA, that's the limitation of our purview on this. You know, I think we had to learn about what's going there in order to understand the site plan and how it's going to work on the site plan. But anything concerning the special permit and the uses really has to be addressed at the ZBA meeting.
Okay.
Nothing?
So, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, in light of that, is there anything that we feel compelled to bring over to the ZBA with respect to the site plan? I know, Michelle, you mentioned making sure that the lighting is addressed and that the signage is addressed.
Yep.
My only concern was the contingency on the, making sure the containments are appropriate, that's a groundwater issue. Was there anything else?
Create a buffer amongst, around the mulch.
Oh, yeah, the buffer around the mulch, if there isn't one there, yep. Anything else? Amy?
I'd like to check the zoning before they go through the special.
Well, the ZBA hearing isn't close, so certainly as, certainly you can attend that, as a member of the public can bring that forward and the ZBA can do what they.
For the planning board, we cannot make any comments on non-conforming to non-conforming.
It's, that's not within our purview for this. We are commenting on site plan only, not the use or the purpose of the special permit. Anything else on this side?
No.
So then, so am I, the only thing that I'm, I'm saying in a memo from the planning board is that, is that you just want to make sure that there's appropriate lighting and signage on the site?
Is that how you want it worded?
I'm sorry, yes.
Appropriate lighting and signage.
And to indicate it on his site plan.
And how do I get confirmation on the hazardous waste piece? Do I, is that something zoning can clarify or ask, or, that's the piece that I'm interested in. I just want to know how was it operating previously and what was there? Were they permitted for hazardous waste materials or, I'm just trying to, how do I find that out?
I can certainly ask the, I mean, it's nothing that the planning board has ever been involved with, so that's the short answer. So I don't, I don't have the information myself or in our planning board files. But I can certainly check with the board of health, with fire department, to see what they have for records as far as what, you know, may or may not have been stored there in the past.
Okay, oh, so ZBA wouldn't necessarily be looking for that?
I'm, well, I'm sure probably more groundwater will be looking for it.
Okay.
But, but I mean, in the meantime, I can, you know, ask those other departments if they have anything in their files.
Okay, I would just want to, well, I, I mean, I guess as far as, if I can request it, to just find some sort of definitive answer on if it was industrial waste and disposal, what did that, did that entail hazardous waste and chemicals and things like that? What does that mean? Or if there's something, you can point me in the direction of where I can look that up, or maybe I go to groundwater. I just want to kind of follow the trail there.
And, so let me start with those two?
Okay.
And then, and then I'll see what, what those departments have or don't have, and then we can go from there.
Thanks.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll send a memo to the zoning board about lighting and signage.
Yeah, can we talk about intensity, so the amount of trucks or, just ask the questions or we have to go and ask the questions?
That's, it's not about the site plan, it's, it's got to go to ZBA, it's got to go to the meeting, okay? Okay, Mr. Gould, thank you. Nice to see you again. Thank you for coming in, nice to see you. Good luck with the ZBA, on groundwater, on Concom. Okay, we only have one set of minutes we need to roll through, and so let's move on to that. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're trying to conduct our meeting, thank you. Our next matter on the agenda is the minutes for the December fourth, two thousand and eighteen meeting. I had a chance to review them. Well, sir, first, thank Elaine or whoever did them for getting them turned around for cleanup for this meeting.
Yep, she just, she couldn't be here tonight, her, not that it matters, but, she's in New Jersey with her brother, first has head surgery. So she's, she's out of the state. So what, what you have, if you're going to do minutes right now, what you have in front of you, is I just printed out, I had received changes from, some edits from Carrie and from Amy. And the, on, on one of them, on one of the, the proposed edits, actually Carrie on, I just double-checked in my file about who Tom Reden worked for, and then I double-checked with him himself. And he was hired by the family, not by Tony Abou.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if that was a typo or.
Yeah, so, actually, I forgot what page that's on, Carrie.
Seven. I just happened to see it on seven.
On seven. So he, yeah, so he was hired by, I don't know, I don't remember the family's name, actually. I can find it and put it in there if you want, but, or I think if you just left it as, that he was hired by a client.
That, that's fine, I thought it was a typo.
All right, Michelle, did you have a chance to review?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, Anthony, did you have any changes?
I did not.
All right, and Carrie and Amy, you both already made your changes? All right, if there's no other changes, we'll entertain a vote on these.
I make a motion to accept the December fourth minutes as amended and highlighted and presented to us tonight.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, okay. Next, we have a general discussion of the special permit process. And this comes on the heels of the meeting that we had on December four, where after the meeting, a draft was sent out and there was a lot of emailing back and forth with the town planner's office. So after some discussion on simple procedure, how do we make this procedure better? What we're going to do is, moving forward, we're going to deal with two twenty-two tonight, but moving forward, a decision, a draft decision will go out, I'm sorry, will be provided to us for review and discussion at the meeting. Now, the thing that everybody needs to remember is that once we close the hearing, we cannot deliberate any further on the subject matter. If we, when we're reviewing a proposed decision, if, for example, Amy, if you say, I would like to identify the individuals who voted in favor and the individuals who voted against, well, that is something that was brought up at the hearing. And as long as there's a consensus to put that information in, we can do that. We cannot redeliberate, we cannot reopen, we cannot ask questions for more information, we can't do anything like that. It's really just taking a look at what was said at the hearing and saying, okay, I said X, Y, Z at the hearing and in support of my decision to vote for or against, I would like to have X, Y, Z put in as follows. And then Theresa Capelvianco voted in favor, indicating that this seemed like an appropriate site for. site for, um, the allowance of the waiver. Period. That's what was actually said at the prior hearing before it was closed. There would be no further discussion on the merits of the statement, and as long as three or more of us agreed that that should go in there, then it goes in. So that will happen at a, at a hearing after the vote has been taken and we have a draft decision to work with, and then everybody's going to sign the decision. So I think that instead of bombarding the town planner's office with multiple emails about the same decision, we get it all done out in the open and we take care of it that way. So, in light of that, we're going to give it a go with 222, West Main Street. Okay? So we have a draft decision, and a lot of you emailed in and said, "I'd like to see this in the decision," or "I'd like to see that in the decision." So what we're going to do is go through those people who believe that something else needs to be in the decision, we're taking out. We'll take, we'll go through that. We'll get the decision in the order that it's supposed to be in, as long as what we are talking about is not in any way reopening the decision, reopening the hearing, modifying or amending what was done at that hearing or what was said at that hearing. And if there's any doubt as to how information was presented, um, then my suggestion's going to be that you make a note of it and then we finish it at the next hearing after we've got a chance to review the video and go back to the table.
Does this need to be on the agenda if we're opening this up again?
It's, we're not reopening it. We're finalizing the decision.
But we're discussing it?
We're not discussing it. We're finalizing the decision.
Okay, because I don't see.
It's, we're, we're just trying to finalize the decision, put the right information into the decision. It's the same thing that we would do via email in trying to finalize the decision. We're just going to do it right here instead.
Which I appreciate. I, I appreciate it, but I don't see it on the agenda. So I just want to confirm.
Well, we can, we can do it in February. We can do it February 5.
I just don't know, because I think there's a lot of.
Yeah, it's fine. If there's, if there's a concern, we'll put it on the agenda and we'll do it February 5. So, is that what we should do?
Um, there is not any issue with you discussing it tonight because this is just, this is an open-ended, um, you know, again, you do this with other decisions. Um, if, I mean, I can't give you one specifically, but I mean, we've been doing it for years and years and years. Um, but if you all feel more comfortable and you want it posted, um, but it's, you cannot talk about.
Yeah. Can't reopen it.
Right.
So.
The public hearing is closed. The decision was made. It, you're, you're done.
Right. And, I, okay. So, and the applicant is here tonight. So to the extent that, okay. Well, Amy, do you want, do you want to hold this over to February 5?
Yeah, it's up to you. But I, like you said, the changes being made aren't anything that's going to affect the decision. It's more just.
No, it's not going to affect the decision. We can't even, we can't even discuss what.
That's all, that's all you're doing.
It's really all it is. It's edits. That's it.
You do this by email and we're no longer going to do it by email. You're, you're going to do it at a public meeting.
And I promise you that the residents aren't sitting in my office waiting for the email to come in. So, Michelle, how do you feel about it?
I'm okay with starting to work on it tonight.
Carrie?
I'm okay.
I agree.
Yeah. So do it tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Abou, you're okay if we do this tonight?
Do you mind if I just clarify something?
Mm-hmm.
What, um, just when, in the new process you were talking about, does that mean we don't close the hearing until we then talk about the decision? Or do we close a hearing and then talk about it in that same night? Um, do you, well, Kathy's the one that has to do the lion's share of the work. Do you have a preference on that?
My, my recommendation, there's, there's no right or wrong answer to that question, Carrie. But my recommendation has always been to the boards is that to keep your hearing open. Um, and that way, as you're, and I'll give you actually the pros and cons. So if you keep the hearing open and as you start to deliberate, um, then, you know, if you have any outstanding questions, you can ask the applicant. Um, if you, you've closed the hearing, which is fine, that's completely legal to do. You close the hearing and then you start to deliberate, that's fine. That's all done at a public meeting. Um, it's just that if you then have any additional questions, you, you, you've, you know, cut off any ability to request additional information. That said, what some boards will do is, you know, just prior to closing the public hearing, you know, that everyone will make sure that they have all the information, that they, you know, all their questions have been asked. Um, and then you can close it and then deliberate. Or you can deliberate while it's open. Um, but while it's open, it's still considered a public hearing. So if people still wanted to ask questions, you know, you could be interrupted that way. So there's, there's no right or wrong, the answer.
So let's, let's get through 222.
Okay.
All right. And we'll see if we get any more applications before us.
Right. And that, and.
And then we'll deal with it.
Very good point.
And we'll deal with it as it comes because it may be like, some instances, it may not make sense to keep it open and other instances, it may.
Got it. Thank you.
I don't think we'll pigeonhole ourselves one way or the other. All right. So, um, when looking at the decision is drafted right now, we've got some initial findings numbered one through thirteen. I'm sorry, we'll, we'll look at one through twelve. And the one, the findings that you see at, um, one through twelve are all derived from the documents that were submitted by the applicant or by other committees or boards who are entitled to chime in and provide us with information. So these aren't findings that we actually have to sit down and say, "Okay, is this a 3.2 acre site located in a residential seed zoning district?" We know that it is. And so it's a finding that can be made preliminarily by, um, staff in drafting the decisions. Um, I've reviewed the findings. I don't see findings one through twelve. We'll, we'll go to there. I don't see anything on findings one through twelve that are contrary to the documents. But just to make sure that everyone else agrees with that, Amy, have you looked at findings one through twelve?
Um, yeah.
Are you good with them?
Um, well, one thing I had to change on is I read, it might have been in writing reasonable and defensible decisions. They mentioned you want to talk about the abutting areas. So like the first one says a 3.5 acre site is located in residential seed. And I wanted to say, "And about single-family homes, a nursing home and a church." Because those are, it's abutting. That's what I had to change.
So the immediate abutter to the west is the nursing home, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then the immediate abutter to the north is single-family?
Yep.
And the immediate abutter to the east and to the south are streets.
And commercial.
And commercial. Residential and commercial.
Yeah. You have the post office and the sewer pump station across the street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the, the direct abutter is the nursing home, and then the nursing home is abutted by the church.
Okay. I just thought you had to have the butters, and I guess it would be single-family homes and nursing home.
Do you want that added into the decision?
I thought it mentioned that it should be.
Well, okay. No, I want to know what you want to know, not what you're reading and somebody else telling you to do. You've read it, so tell me what you want.
Well, yeah, that's what I wanted to do, saying "And about single-family homes and a nursing, and a church, and a nursing home." Single-family homes and a nursing home. Immediate abutters.
Michelle, how do you feel about that language?
Um, I think you can put it in, Amy, but I think if you do, you need to be fair and do the commercial across the street.
Is it commercial across the street?
Yes. Yeah, it's the post office commercial.
Right now?
I don't know. Is that considered commercial or municipal?
It's not municipal because it's federal. It's, it's not local.
Yeah. Yeah, it's in the biz, that's the business, uh.
It sits, yeah, it sits right next to Lowe's.
See, when I sit at the post office and look across the street, I'm looking at the nursing home and the church. I wasn't looking at that lot.
That's the entrance. The exit is directly across the street from the lot. No question. Okay. So it abuts residential.
Single-family.
Single-family homes.
Nursing home.
Nursing home and.
And a post office.
And commercial.
Yeah.
All right. Carrie, you good with that?
Uh, yes.
Anthony, you good with that?
Yes.
Oh, so we can add that in?
All right. So, so it's going to read, "The 3.2 5 acre site is located in the residential seed zoning district. And abuts, single-family, um, nursing home."
See, and I'd say a post office, because commercial, I think, is wide open. It could be anything from.
Well, the nursing home is considered commercial, but.
So we can just say, "Single-family and commercial."
"Single-family and commercial."
Yep. Because the, certainly the nursing home could conceivably change use at some point. So.
All right. So.
When we say, "Single-family and."
So, "And about, single-family and commercial."
Yep. All right. Anything else in the first twelve, Amy?
Um, well, in the second one, I added a second one, where it says, "The existing house, barn, garage and pool are to be demolished and the lot will be subdivided into five individual lots."
Where's that?
I added that.
I, that's not on the draft?
That's.
I had added it with what I sent to Kathy, just because this isn't one single lot that was, um, going to a multifamily. It was being subdivided. I thought it needed to be.
No, it's, this is not a subdivision. And if you look at number six, the A and R plan was already created on here. The, the A and R plan's already identified. It's not a subdivision.
As long as it's on there. Okay. Then I don't need that. Anything else? Um, on number six, I just wanted to add the size of the house. The applicant originally proposed to build four 5,600 square foot, two family dwellings. I thought the size.
Amy, we're not, we're not using the draft that you, that you've got.
Oh, I know, but you asked me for comments, so it's easier for me to see what I wrote.
Well, I know, but.
My number six doesn't say that.
Isn't.
Oh, okay. Um, and it's probably five, because I added two. So the applicant originally proposed to build four. And I was just going to write 5,600 square feet, two family. I only want to add that one number.
5,600 square feet, single-family?
Two family.
Oh.
Because originally, we asked them, and, and I have that in the minutes, that it was 2,800 on each side. That'd be the original.
Well, okay. So why are you putting in the size of the duplexes but not the size of the single-family homes?
We could.
But is there a reason why you would do one and not the other?
I was only doing it because we have to write a defensible decision, and we talked about how the size was inconsistent. So I thought the size should be mentioned. But we could put the size of the single-family homes, but I don't know if we ever asked. We have so many bedrooms. I don't know if I know the size of the single-family homes. And I don't, I can't ask any more questions.
Michelle, how do you feel about putting in the size of the duplexes?
I don't really think it makes a difference. I'm trying to remember if, if the single-family houses were 2,800 square feet or not. I don't remember, actually.
There's also a range in the minutes.
Okay.
So, so it's not 56 or whatever number you were using. There's a range of 2,400 to 2,800 square feet each.
I think we need to change that. It was 24 on one side and 28 on the other side. But when we originally talked about it, the original four were 28 and 28. And then the new ones were 28 and 24. So I actually added that on for comment, the, when it talks about the size in the new ones.
I'm not, I, I'm not confident enough in the numbers that you're providing to be able to, um, make that indication. I also don't believe it's necessary, but let's see what the rest of the board thinks. Um, Carrie?
Uh, I'm sorry. I was just actually trying to look it up. Is, is it in the minutes in a format that we could find it and?
I just see in the minutes that, um, on page three, actually, Carrie, you had, you had asked, and Mr. Abou indicated that they will be 24 to 2,800 square feet each.
So, oh, no, it'd be August because it was the original one. Are we talking about the original, Amy?
Right, the original.
So they would be in the August one.
I don't have the August minutes.
I wonder if I.
Okay, but this plan, this paragraph five deals with the, um, amended, the applicant's amendment.
It's the, the two duplexes that are being.
Right. The two duplexes that are being proposed, they, they weren't, they weren't even discussed in August because they weren't presented in August. So.
Well, it says, "The applicant originally proposed." That's what my sentence is.
So you want to put the size of the original two, uh, four? Okay. Now I don't understand what you want to put in here.
No, I just, I, the applicant originally proposed to build four 5,600 square feet. Those are the original, is what I'm saying.
Okay, but that's not what we're voting on.
Right. But that was a finding that was put here.
Okay. Because that's what's in the plan.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I don't, I don't believe that the size of the house, especially on the plan that wasn't presented for vote, um, is, is required at this point. Um, Anthony, do you have an opinion on this one?
I just, I don't think we have a definitive of what exactly, I mean, I, I remember those numbers are 24 and 28 per unit, but I think if we knew, I, I think it would make sense to have some context to the size. But if we don't have an exact number, I don't know if it makes sense to put anything in.
Okay. Anything else, Amy?
How about on this? So we don't, I know the applicant originally is, is, is pre, when he was coming with all of the duplexes. But then, in the end, it says with two duplexes, why don't you say on West Main Street, um, that are, that will be 24 to 2,800 square feet each, something like that, in that sentence. Theresa, right here.
Yep.
What about that? Amy, what about that?
We'd have to say each side.
Yeah.
Because the two duplexes would actually be 5,200 to 5,600 square feet, not 2,400.
No, it would be, it would be 48 to 56. 24 plus 24 is 48.
Okay.
Anthony, you okay with the range?
Yes.
Carrie?
I am.
Okay. I'm not, but you guys, uh, vote me. So you got it.
So you could say, "And two duplexes on West Main Street, that would be 24 to 2,800 square feet for each duplex."
No, it'd be 48 to 56. Are we doing the total? Are we doing each side?
Oh.
Because the two duplexes, the, we're two duplexes, one, two. And each one.
Can you just, can you just write it, "Total 20, um, total 48 to 56."
And where do you want that?
Hundred square feet.
Where the originally, or under the two duplexes?
No, no, it's under the, and two, two, two duplexes totaling 24, I'm sorry, 48 to 5,600 square feet.
On West Main Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
Amy, anything else? Bless you.
Are we just going to 12?
Yep.
To 12.
Okay. Anthony?
Anything?
Nothing else?
Carrie?
Just at 1 through 12 right now.
Okay.
Anything on 1 through 12 for you? Okay. Michelle, anything on 1 through 12 for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Anthony, do you have anything, uh, let's see. On number 13, which I assume is the one that caused a flurry, um, is there anything you'd like, let's assume that 13 is put off to the side for right now. Is there anything you'd like to add to this decision? Number 13 aside. If you want to amend number 13, or do something with 13, that's fine as well. I'm not saying you can't address that issue.
So I guess I'm not familiar with these decisions enough to say that I feel like there was a lot more color in our, well, certainly in the notes, from the minutes.
Right, in the minutes.
Right. So this is very, you know, cutting edge. And so if this is what it is, then I'm okay with it.
Okay. It, are we allowed to make reference to, like, incorporate by reference to the minutes?
Into a decision? It, I, I've never done that before. It, I, I've never done that before, I mean, the, the minutes aren't a transcript of.
Right, they're not.
Right, so they're part of the public, um, file, but they're, you know, obviously, they're not a transcript, so.
Right.
Um, I think to answer Anthony's question, the, any decision, whether you read previous planning board decisions, or ZBA decisions, they're, they're very cut and dry. It's just, it's just, it's just the facts, ma'am. Um, and the, as you say, the flavor of the meeting is what's reflected in the, um, in the minutes.
Yeah.
For the meeting. So, the, the, the decisions, you know, this is all, this form is the format that we've used for years, it's been approved by town council, you know, you state, you know, you, you state what the public hearing was, you state what the exhibits, you know, that were presented, um, and then you go through, you know, you do a very small hearing section, um, and then the procedural background, excuse me, and then you go into, um, after the exhibits, you go into what the findings were, and then what the conclusion was.
Sure. I have nothing further.
You're good for now? Don't, don't worry, I'm, you, we'll come back to you, in case you change your mind later.
Okay.
It's fine. Carrie, you have anything right now that you want to see added?
Just in the findings we're talking about?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Michelle?
Uh-uh, I'm good.
Amy?
I had decided one thing on the thirteen.
Okay.
Um, it said, the applicant requested a straw poll of the board regarding the granting of the waivers.
Yep.
I added for lot frontage and lot width. I mean, I just mentioned what the waivers were, I don't know if they're.
Okay. Michelle, you all right with that?
Mm-hmm.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yes.
So, at the end of the word waivers, before the period, Kathy will add in for lot frontage and lot width.
Um, and just so, I mean, it's no problem to add that, but just so that you know, that's already stated in your decision.
I know.
Um, in the procedural background, what those waivers are, so, just in case you didn't think that they were already in your decision. So, um, so where, what, where do you want it?
And, and on paragraph thirteen, the end of the first sentence.
So, um, regarding the granting of the waivers.
Right, for lot frontage and lot width.
Amy, did you want to identify who voted in which direction?
Yeah, and I had one more fact finding that I wanted to add.
But, hold on, let's stick with this paragraph. Did you want to identify who voted in which direction? Is that one of the?
Oh, right there on the waiver?
Yeah.
Oh, it doesn't matter to me, it says, three, two were in favor and three were opposed, so it doesn't matter, I don't think we need to identify.
Okay, and then with respect to the, um, all right, well, let's, let's, I mean, hold off on that. Anything else in number thirteen?
Me, no.
Okay, and so, did you say, just say you have something else to add?
I had fourteen.
Okay.
Um, I didn't know a fact finding would be denial of the waivers, left the two lots for the two family units with insufficient lot width and lot frontage, in accordance with seven oh five oh three oh, table of uses, table one. I mean, it was a fact, like, once the waivers were denied, that would leave insufficient lot width and frontage.
Wasn't, it wasn't discussed, well, I don't.
But your, I mean, your whole decision, I mean, the whole application is based on the fact that the waivers were needed, and you didn't grant the waivers, so, so it just goes to the, the assumption, I mean, it's just, it's.
The inference.
Right.
I just thought it was important to add, because, you know, just.
But that's the logical inference, is that if you don't get your waivers, you don't get permanent.
Right, you know, he's requesting waivers for lot frontage and lot width, and you didn't grant them, so therefore, he doesn't have the lot width or the lot frontage.
My concern with including that, is that it was not stated at the hearing, that if the waivers didn't pass the special permit falls apart, that's not something that we said, that was not discussed, um, that's, we all knew that, everybody in the room knew that?
Right, but we have adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for proper operation of the proposed use, we all knew that, but I don't think it was stated that either.
It's, that's identified on the plan, so, that's, that's, that's part of, that's part of the plan. The, I, the, the, the intellectual conclusion that you're reaching isn't, um, in black and white on a plan.
All right, well, I guess I have questions about another decision we did, but I'll talk about that after, because there were fact findings there that we never said, and they were all stated.
So, it, all of the, one through twelve, all comes from, well, well, twelve is actually, twelve itself is, because it was reported to the board, but, one through, so let's say one through eleven, bless you.
Excuse me.
All come from the documentation submitted by or on behalf of the applicant. And so, we don't, you don't have to specifically say it out loud, the things, the, the findings that we have to state out loud are your conclusions that you make as a result of the application before you, um, or the inferences, like the one you just made, that would come from the various decisions, or votes, or discussion, or what have you, things that would not be plainly evident from the black and white on the table. So, with that in mind, do you have any other additions to the findings?
Um, no, it's, I need time to wrap my head around it, I'll have to wrap my head around it.
Okay. Anthony, just to make sure that you may not have thought, or may have thought of anything else for findings?
I, I don't have anything for findings, but I do have another comment, so.
Okay, let me just, yeah, let me just make sure that, Carrie, you good with findings?
Findings, yes.
Okay. Michelle, you good with findings? Okay, and I am as well, so Anthony, you have something else?
So, my, my remaining concern, and I think it was addressed at some level, but I feel like, as though we, we voted on a permit that was never placed on file with the town clerk. Um, it was never solidified, after the vote, the permit that was on file was the, the original four unit, uh, four duplexes, and, I mean, is, are we okay with that procedurally? I mean, it doesn't sound like what, that is.
Well, so, the, the file consists of the original application, and everything that comes in.
Mm-hmm.
It consists of the minutes of the public hearings that were held, the, which includes the statements of the applicant, and, and everyone else that was here, ourselves included, um, and then that which the applicant had submitted, so somewhere, I think in an email, there was a, a redesignation of what the applicant would be looking for, and, um, he asked us to make a decision, um, that evening, based upon what we had in front of us. Um, we did have a sketch for us to review, which, um, I, I believe was, that was an engineer, that was done by the engineer, right? So, it had the appropriate, um, let's say, measurements, for lack of a better word, on it, so you could identify, this is only a hundred and eight feet, versus two hundred and fifty feet, so you knew what the widths were, and the setbacks, et cetera, um, so, I, the, the compilation in its entirety of all of that composes the record, um, so I'm sure you'll jump in if I'm getting this wrong.
Um, no, that's correct, um, sometimes, the, um, and I think I had stated this in an email, um, to the board, the, it depends on, really, the engineering firm, and, and/or the attorney that an applicant has, sometimes you'll see a full-blown new application that they submit, and it's just, it's, it's their way of their record-keeping, or, you know, keeping track of it in-house, um, so sometimes someone will submit a, a new application and write on it that it's, you know, a revised application, other times, an applicant will, will do, sometimes they're even handwritten, you know, they'll sit here at a meeting and, and make a modification, you know, asking to borrow a piece of paper, I mean, sometimes it's that, um, you know, it's not even typed. Um, other times, an applicant will, um, submit a, just a, a new cover letter, saying, you know, that they're amending the application, or, you know, based on, you know, comments from the last public hearing, you know, we're now doing this, this, and this, instead of what we had originally applied for, um, and then other times, we get them, you know, by email. So, it does, there's, there's no, there's not an official process to make an amendment, there's an official process to start the, the process and kick off the, the start of the sixty-five days to hold the public hearing.
Okay, completely understand that.
Yeah.
I'm good.
You're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Anything else on the decision at this point?
No.
Carrie, anything else on the decision at this point?
Um, yeah, so the only other thing was, um, after the decision, looking here in this, um, did you drop the top, writing reasonable decisions?
Yeah, you all have.
Oh, thank you.
I mean, I know you have a, you went to the workshop.
I did, oh, no, no, I did go to the workshop.
Yeah.
I watched it online, anyway, so, there's the last piece that just has a breakdown of the vote, so is that something we could add? So, for the following members of the board voted against the waiver, da-da-da-da-da, the following members of the board voted to deny the special permit, da-da-da-da.
Well, we'd have to do that, in this case, we'll have to do it, because the motion that was made was to approve the special permit and the waivers, and that's, that's how we voted on it, so, definitely, we can certainly do that, so, can you just?
Going forward, or in this one?
Uh, in this one.
Okay, so, so in this one, um, what I was going to do was, was add all the board members for a signature block, and then, in the decision section, is that where you're talking? You want it?
In the decision section, right, Carrie?
Yeah, there's just a little section that says, vote, and then, if you voted for it, there's one set of language, and if you voted against it, it says, the following members of the board voted to deny the grant of a special permit.
Um, we, we've never done that, either in planning board or ZBA, and that's not a right or a wrong, it's just not sort of the model that, that we've used, but, I mean, you, you can add that.
So, how about when we have less than a unanimous vote? We'll break it out.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so on, so I'll add a sentence about who, who voted in favor and who voted against.
Yep.
Is that? Yeah, well, I said, could we do it, like, for the waiver and then the special permit?
But they were voted together.
Yeah, it was, it was one motion.
You can't break that on this one.
Oh.
They were voted together, so.
In this particular case, you did it as one motion.
Yep.
Should we include the reasons? Because I did go back and watch the tape, and we mentioned a couple of reasons why we voted against, like, I don't know.
If you, if you made it, if, if it was part of the motion, then you can do that?
You mean, after the motion was made, during the discussion?
If it was part of the motion, then, then you could write that into the decision, but if you didn't make that as part of the motion, which I don't believe that, I've watched that tape many times, um, I don't believe that it was.
Yeah, so, I don't get what you mean, part of the motion, like, so if someone said, I denied it because it was red, you, you have to say, if someone says, I want to approve five houses because they're blue, and I say, well, I deny it because it's red, I have to make a new motion to say, I don't approve of the, approving it, I want to deny it because it's blue? I know, confusing what I'm saying, but, like, I don't get it, like, there was a motion made, and some people denied it with reasons, but those reasons cannot be listed in the decision?
When you made that motion and then made a second, that, nobody, like, modified the motion to say, to, to say anything other than what Michelle originally said?
But, well, because we stated reasons, those can't be part of it unless.
You, you didn't make it as part of the motion?
You'd have to say, um, so, for example, if you were, um, voting in opposition because of the size of the building, and then, so they said, well, are you voting in opposition, you know, for the special permit and the waivers, and you say, I oppose, but I'd like to amend it, because I'm also voting and opposing it because of the size of the building, you had to, isn't that correct?
Right, your, your motion, your, someone's motion could have been, or, you know, moving, going forward, um, you know, I make a motion, um, to deny the, uh, these two waivers and the, and these two special permits, um, based on the fact that blah, 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 the, I believe that the, um, that the buildings are too large, the site is too hilly, the houses are red, you know, and then someone needs to second that, then you need to vote on it.
Okay, so, everybody has to be on board with, like, people don't, like, when we made our decision, we stated different reasons, so it has to be all one reason?
It, it needs to be in a motion.
So, here it says that you, it just represents, you can put in specific findings that represent the board's conclusions, the board just, this is the spot where they show their decisions, and I think this is something that I sent to you, about, this is where you kind of put why you decided what you decided, it seems like you'd be able to put that in, if not in the decision part, then somewhere it can go in here, it can't, that you don't have to make this ridiculously long motion, full of, you know, X, Y, Z criteria.
No, but you, you need, you need to, if, if you want something on the public record in your decision, you need to, you need to state that.
Oh, so that's fine, so I wonder, then, if it, if not in the decision, does that belong in the findings, then?
But, but you, but you, as a, as a board, did not make those findings, you know, you, as individuals, you said different things, based on my recollection of the tape, um, but you, as a board, did not say, um, you know, um, again, we find, we find the buildings to be too large, you know, we want to.
We need to be unanimous.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we need to, we need to include that, you know, or, I, I'd like to have that included in the, in the.
Oh, so maybe it could be in the public hearing spot, because there, you could have, like, several residents had concerns related to traffic, why couldn't we have several board members had concerns related to X, Y, Z?
Well, it's in your minutes, I mean, that's, that's where, you know, again, your, you know, your, your decision is not a retelling of your minutes.
Oh, right, no, I get that, I'm just trying to think of what Amy's trying to say, she's saying, if she wants this reflected, there's got to be a spot in here, and maybe it's, is it, could it be something in the public hearing section, where you can say, it's, it doesn't have to be unanimous, I understand what you're saying about findings, can it be in that spot, so residents had this, but, so we talk a lot about residents and things like that, but we really don't get into anything the board really said in the public hearing, it seems to be missing. So, there's no concerns listed here that the board expressed throughout the hearing, if, there's absolutely zero listings of our concerns.
No, that's not true, because I made, I made a suggestion that we downsize, and that's actually, that at the August twenty-one meeting, some planning board members suggested the applicant consider decreasing the number of lots, so.
Okay, but, I feel like there were concerns expressed that aren't really, so that was a suggestion of what could be done, but that doesn't really address the concerns that were made throughout this hearing, is all I'm saying. So, if we're supposed to show our thought process, or, or at least some sort of representation of board opinion, there's really no representation of board opinion, I guess, aside from Teresa making a suggestion.
The, the, and I think the reason, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the reason why that is put in here, is because that's what results in the modification of the plan.
That, that, yeah, that's why it was.
That, the, the suggestion for revision is what resulted in a revision, and that's why it's in here, um, but, as I think Kathy explained, the minutes are basically the ragout on top of the pasta, this is the pasta, it's just plain, it's boring, but once you add sauce to it, which should be your minutes, it makes so much more sense.
Okay, well, can we add to our sauce, because our sauce looks pretty light, so, could we, like?
You already approved your minutes, though.
Well, there's stuff in the minutes that we could, so what I'm saying is.
Yeah, what I'm saying, I'm sorry, we're, we're not being clear, anybody who read, so this is just basically your thumb, your upping or downing the petition, or the application, the minutes are going to be your backstory.
Okay, I'm just saying, when I saw that video that Pam Brown did online, I did the whole training for it, I went through the whole online thing, and her big, her big piece was, there should be some description of the board's thought process, or how, what, what the board is thinking as part of the decision, and I'm looking at something that explains what the residents had for concerns, but I don't see anything here explaining what the board had for concerns, so, is there a way to either, I mean, I guess you can read the minutes, but if you're just looking at this plane, there's nothing in here that reflects the board's process, or, or concerns, or anything, it's really just, I, I don't know, and, that, that's one thing that I had said before, was just, it's really, it seems to be a missing component, was, was sort of the concerns of the board are not represented in here.
So, is it, are you thinking that there's, you can't put a small paragraph in there? Because I think what Carrie's getting at, and I'm hearing from these two, is that. Because I think what Carrie's getting at, and I'm hearing from these two, is that in order to have a defensible decision, you can't allow, minutes are not allowed in court, right?
Oh, they absolutely are.
Oh, they are?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I, I...
I mean, it's all part of the, the entire file. I mean, I guess you guys are going from a premise that this would be appealed, but, um, I mean, and I don't rate the decisions that way. But, um, the, everything, every, everything that's in our office is part of the public document, and that would be part of an appeal.
I, I mean, I can tell you generally speaking, and when I've taken these types of decisions on appeal, you never go with, with just the decision. Okay. And whatever the decision references internally. So all of the documents that are identified, plus all of the minutes for each of the meetings that are identified, are all collected as part of the appeal process. Um, you know, sometimes the, I think that part of the concern with adding a lot of this stuff into the decision is that it obviates the need for minutes. So Kathy, do you have any, um, any other guidance on this particular issue?
Um, well, I'm just flipping through the minutes.
I mean, I don't want to add a transcript. I'm just saying, out of twenty-two pages of minutes, there's got to be something. But, so there is a couple of paragraphs that were picked out, for whatever reason they're picked out. But out of twenty-two pages of minutes, there's got to be some sort of representation of board opinion in the public hearing piece. There is no representation of board opinion in this.
So what is it that you're looking at?
Well, if we had, like, if there's any sort, like Amy was saying, if, if the board members voted a certain way because why? They felt this was a problem. They felt traffic was a problem. They felt the neighborhood was a problem. They felt, whatever the case were, per the minutes, not what's here, because we've, we can't add what's ever in the minutes. If we could at least represent some out of these paragraphs, just dedicate one to board concerns or board likes, what board, whatever the case. I mean, I, I don't, I just think it's, out of twenty-two pages, there's got to be, and there's nothing here that reflects that. And there's, that can't be.
So I, I don't think that the board agreed on anything that night as collective?
That's fine. I'm not saying it's... It could be several board members said.
Well, okay, so my, I guess my question would be, if you could add one sentence representative, whatever did you want to add, what would that one sentence be?
Several board members expressed concerns, including, and then whatever's in the minutes. I'm not going to presume to list them all here. Whatever's in the minutes, whatever concerns were in here.
Do, how, how about the, the paragraph, um, and I don't mean to oversimplify this, but the paragraph under the public hearing section where it starts off with, "Several residents had concerns relating to traffic volume. Um, they anticipated being created by the four two-family dwelling units. Residents also expressed concern relating to the size of the proposed dwelling units and lack of compatibility with the existing homes in the area." What, what if, what if we added, um, you know, um, s- several residents and some of the board members? Or some, some of the board members and several residents had concerns relating to that?
Yeah, something.
I mean, is that, is that too simple or...
That seems to address some of it.
Yeah, I mean...
What do you feel about that?
Well, I don't, I don't know if you group in the residents and the board together because I think what you're doing is trying to explain your vote at this point, is my take on it. I suppose you could take that with residents as well, I guess, so, I don't know.
I just ask a quick question for the sake of time, and we're coming up to nine o'clock. Is, does this need to be done tonight? Do we have a deadline on this decision?
I think we're almost done.
Okay.
I do think that we are...
No, we're not almost done.
Oh.
You're way past.
Okay.
The, um, in the state statute, the, um, there's reference to that decisions, um, shall be done within fourteen days.
Okay.
And, um, the, we very, we, I'm saying as the collectively for Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, we very rarely meet that fourteen-day time period in the statute. However, there is no, um, um, there is no, punishment is not the right word. But the, the decision doesn't automatically get approved by default, um, if you don't meet that fourteen days. But, um, so you're well past that fourteen days.
Right. And I think the applicant is here this evening, and I think the, out of fairness to him, he's been very patient.
I mean, you, you voted on this December fourth.
I don't know that there's going to be too much more to add to this in any event.
You closed, you closed the hearing, um, and that stopped your clock, and that started the fourteen days.
What's the ninety days? Not that I want to continue this.
The ninety days is, um, the time within which to, um, make a decision...
After you close the hearing.
Ri- right. And you, so you, you closed the hearing on the first
Right.
of those ninety days. So, so that was it. You, you had one, that one day.
Right.
You know, you, so that's, so you could take, I mean, a board could take up to three months to sit here and deliberate and, you know, go through rough drafts of decisions.
The way I was reading it, yeah, I didn't know if that included the actual stating your decision and writing the decision, the ninety days.
No, that's the fourteen, that, that's not fourteen. That's the fourteen days.
That would all be done before the vote.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so...
You wrote the decision before the vote?
No, the, the ninety days is the time from the close of the hearing to the vote. Once you vote, then you have the fourteen days.
All right. We just, we did it in the same day, so our ninety days was abbreviated to like an hour.
Okay.
But it could, it could have been up to ninety days.
You could forget, but end of the ninety days.
So do you want me to take a shot at this?
So I'm adding, there's, I mean, there's, there's no other vote you need to take.
No, 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 I think...
You're just approving this wordsmithing.
Decision. So I think Michelle may have, um... So to address Anthony's concern about not putting Planning Board members with the residents, yet I think when I heard everyone's discussions, um, a lot of the Planning Board members had some of the concerns of the same as the residents. I don't know if we want to say all Planning Board members or just say some of the Planning Board members had concerns related to traffic volume. Almost take that same paragraph. Um, "They anticipated created by the four two-family dwelling units." But now they were, it, it wasn't four, it's only two at the time we were voting on. Um, "The size and the scale of the buildings and its lack of consistency with the existing neighborhood." That seems to be, when I go back and read all these minutes, that everyone's highlighted in yellow those three things that came from Amy. And then I took a couple from, from you, Carrie, as well. Is that something that you think is... I think, well, it's a good point. And so that paragraph actually deals with the August twenty-one meeting. So I think if we, um, if you copy it down at the December four meeting and make it reference the, um...
Can you, Michelle, did you write that down?
I did.
Because I just, I amended it to say some of the board members and several residents had concerns relating to traffic volume. So you don't want that anymore. You want to say...
I just think Anthony...
You just want to read it, leave that paragraph as several residents had concerns?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, so now you have a new paragraph to add someplace?
Carrie, is it my understanding that some of your concerns and Anthony and Amy and is what we heard in the discussion of the board was traffic, scale of the building, and consistency with the existing neighborhood?
Yes.
Yes, so that would be a good solution. Thank you.
Okay. So if we can create a paragraph of that...
So do you, do you have that written down?
In my scribble, yes.
Okay.
Yep. After the, after, at, at the end of this. At the, yeah. Yeah. After the December four meeting. Lot, after the last paragraph on that page. It said, I don't know if we want to say all or some, or some of the Planning Board members had concerns related to traffic volume, the size and the scale of the buildings, and its lack of consistency with existing neighborhood of single-family homes.
Okay, I, I'm not a, a secretary here. So all I have is, some of the Planning Board members had...
Concerns related to traffic volume.
Wait a minute, had concerns. Related to traffic volume.
Size and scale of buildings. And I would say, was it the seal, size and scale of duplexes, right? You weren't, you didn't have concerns over the single-family houses. But they, the single-family houses weren't before us. They were allowed as a matter of fact. Okay.
So size and scale of the duplexes?
Yeah.
Yeah?
And its lack of consistency with existing neighborhood of single-family homes. And I only, I'm just pulling this out of the minutes. That's just in the minutes of December fourth, that's right there.
And the lack of consistency with the...
Existing neighborhood.
Okay, and you want that to follow after the, at the December fourth, two thousand eighteen meeting?
Yep. Uh, but I think if you're going to put that in, you have to put in, um, that... I, I'm going to say one, because I can't remember if you said it or not. But one board member felt that the plan, that the proposed, um, duplexes were appropriate for the site.
Okay, one board member felt the proposed duplexes...
Does that cover everything?
Were appropriate for the site.
So I, I know that you voted in favor of this. Is there anything you wanted to say relative to your... No, I think this is, covers everything.
So do you want to say two board members felt the proposed duplexes were appropriate for the site?
Well, the, the vote was... I'm one. The vote was two. You vote two in favor, so... Because that only...
Okay, so I'll say two board members felt the proposed duplexes were appropriate for the site.
Because the vote was three opposed, two in favor.
Right.
Okay. Anything else, Amy?
No.
Anything else, Carrie?
No.
Anything else, Carrie? Anything else, Michelle?
Nope. We have a decision.
Okay, so I'll have the decision, um, done, um, revised by, uh, what is tomorrow? Wednesday? Thursday? And, um, and then everyone can just stop in and sign it?
Yep. You wanted to shoot us an email when it's ready?
Yep.
Okay. So for anybody who hasn't had to do this yet, you just walk right into the planning office. It's going to be on the counter in an, in a folder. Sign your name, and you can walk out. Say hi if you want. Don't say hi. Depends on if you're feeling friendly. All right. Uh, do we have any A and R's, lot releases, bonds?
Uh, no.
Anything like that?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Can I just say that, um, I went to a Planning Board meeting in the town of Boylston on a project. They do not have a town planner, by the way. There, it's, all the decisions are written by the board members themselves. They don't close, they didn't close that specific hearing. The applicant was in front of them, and that's how they made, wrote the decision. When they finalized and everything, rather than closing the hearing, they started writing the decision. And then they would have a question, they'd ask the applicant, you know, because they'd go back and forth, and then they'd answer it, and then they'd write their decision that way. Um, so it was really interesting seeing, um, it from that perspective. It was quite long.
That's horrible.
It was quite long.
It sounds horrible.
That is just...
It really does sound horrible.
It sounds like you might mix up information that you're asking new information that you can't ask because you've already closed it.
I mean, it probably, it was, took them like almost an hour to write the decision as they were sitting there. But that's just a smaller community with no support. Right? But anyways, it might be a good thing, like Teresa said about, I mean, or Kathy as well, not to close the decision, close the meeting.
Yeah, so I guess we'll just, we'll, I, from here on, I think we'll, we'll do is we'll take it on a case-by-case. We'll see what's before us, if it makes sense to close it. Because it's, it's a five-zero vote in one direction or the other, doesn't make sense to keep it open. Get it done, then we'll close it. But if it's going to be hotly contested, it might make sense to keep it open, but let's just evaluate them as they come.
Yep.
Okay. All right, let's move on to some zoning articles.
So, so we can vote and not close the hearing, but still vote?
Could you, you have to close the hearing before you vote?
Yes.
Oh, got it. Thank you.
Yep. The vote comes at the end?
But you can, you know, deliberate, talk about it, what, what you want for, you know, the specific findings. What do you want to make sure that's in there?
Okay, thank you.
Before you vote?
Yeah, you can discuss what your vote will be.
Part of your discussion.
All right.
Part of your discussion.
So different.
All right. Um, let's move on to zoning articles. Um, we're going to pass over whatever is pending for review by other boards. So Kathy gave us, um, the, the draft, which, thank you for emailing that earlier this week or last week. Um, so we're going to skip the first one because that's going to ZBA, right?
Yes. And, um, and that, well, actually, can, what, what you have, um, because this is what happens with zoning amendments. What I sent to you has been slightly changed. And so you have in front of you tonight something that's not on letterhead.
Okay. So use what's on the table. It doesn't have it.
Yes, yes. Yep. And, um, so that is based on what, what you have in front of you tonight. And, and the, the red does not follow the procedure that we use at town meeting, and I'll explain that in a second. But it was just, just for, for visual tonight. Um, this, the changes that are, that I made, that are, you'll, you are seeing tonight, were based on a meeting I had with our building inspector, um, who was out last week with pneumonia. So, um, Bob and I were just able to get together today. And, um, so he had a couple, um, suggestions and preferences. So as, as we go through those, I'll note those.
Okay.
All right, so if you, if you can all use, um, that version.
Just, are we just looking at the, the Shell versus May one?
Yeah, we're going to skip over this one, though, because it's going to ZBA.
Oh, no, that's fine, but I don't understand what you mean, but Bob had different suggestions. For this one, he had suggestions?
No. When, when we get to my red, the, um, and I, so again, I didn't, I didn't do, this doesn't, what you're seeing in red doesn't follow the format that we use for town meeting, but just for tonight, for hopefully being able to follow this.
He's, you've, you provided him with draft bylaws, which then he amended.
Yes.
These are his amendments to the draft bylaws.
What you're seeing in, in red here.
In addition to the amendment to the bylaws.
Yes.
Okay. You got it. That's what I do.
So the, um, as I mentioned, I think in the, um, in the email that I had sent out, I did send these also. I mean, you know, basically, it's pretty much the Planning Board that makes the presentations or, or proposes the zoning articles. But, um, you know, you had talked about before that at least two of these that are being proposed, you know, pertain to another board, and you're looking for that board's input. So this has been sent to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Um, so they'll be looking, um, at their meeting next week. They'll be looking at that first, um, article about the Shell and changing from Shell to May. Um, so you want me to go to the next article about the design review? Okay. So the, um, the design rev, so, so a couple of things are combined in here. Um, you all discussed, um, uh, changing or, or adding in that there would be, um, a term limit as far as, um, not that someone couldn't continuously serve, but that there is a, you know, a start and a stop. So, because sometimes when I say term limits, people think, oh, that means I can't run again, or I can't be reappointed. So no, term limits meaning that you're either going to sit on that board for, you know, three years or five years. I inserted five years. I mean, this is up to you. I inserted five years as a, as a, you know, possible choice as opposed to three just because of how different this board is compared to any other board and the expertise that's needed on the board. Um, so that's why it says three or five. Um, in talking with the Design Review Committee themselves, um, and, and I, I agree with this change, is that, uh, we would change it, instead of one degreed architect, we would change it to two licensed architects. And the architects that are on the board, we have two on the board right now. And I just, and Michelle can speak to this also. It has just worked out so well, having two architects as opposed to one architect. Um, the, the exchange of information and the different perspectives that they, that they bring. And the proper terminology is licensed and not degreed, so they asked if that could be changed. One degreed landscape architect, that's always been on the board. There was some discussion on, on, at Friday's design review committee meeting. Michelle wasn't able to be there, so she didn't technically vote on this change, but there was, there were some questions asked about what the history of, why does this board makeup have a chamber of commerce member? And so, I explained the history that the, originally, this all came under, we had a redevelopment authority in Northborough, and from the redevelopment authority, we realized that we needed to have design review, we needed to have site plans, so that's how that all came to be. So, at the time, the redevelopment authority was very connected with the chamber of commerce, so we had included in the original language that there would be a chamber of commerce person. And basically, it meant, you know, either business owner or of, from Northborough, or how it was interpreted, you know, and/or somebody, you know, in one of these pertinent fields. So, so the board, the design review committee discussed, and Carrie was at that meeting on Friday, that it probably really isn't pertinent, that there has to be a chamber of commerce person on the board anymore, especially where they would like to see two architects on the board. And then the, so that's, that's suggested to be stricken. And then, right now, it reads that there could also be one interested and responsible citizen, which the more I read that term, it kinda cracks me up.
I was just reading that, thinking, why would we ever put an irresponsible, disinterested person on the board?
Exactly. So, we talked about how it was important to keep, you know, that option open, that there could be a resident on the board that's not necessarily a licensed architect or a landscape architect, but the design review committee had asked me to look at the makeup of other design review committees elsewhere in Massachusetts, and do they have a resident at large, or, and/or what's their makeup? And so, there, the ones that I looked at, Newton, Cambridge, Acton, Westbro, Wellesley, they don't have just a resident at large, but they associate the resident that they've got some sort of specific background. So, not necessarily a degree, but that they are familiar with, you know, one of these categories.
That seems to make sense to me, because we wouldn't wanna put somebody on the finance committee that has absolutely nothing to do with finance. Like, it just doesn't seem to make sense to me to do that. So, this change actually makes a lot of sense.
And then, the interior design is, was just a suggestion of my building inspector not to have interior design.
I actually'd like it back in.
And so, and that's fine. He, he wasn't, that was just his initial reaction, was he was thinking that, you know, we're not really talking about the interior of these buildings, we're talking about what the outside of them looks like. So, he didn't think that there was a lot of value added, that it, that there should, you know, it would be more important to have these other people on there, but, you know, I don't think there's, you know, heartache either way.
I'd be interested in hearing why you would like a designer in.
Because Pam Bleakney, who was on there for years, ten, fifteen years, is an interior designer.
Okay.
And I thought she brought a lot to the, just about color and just, I mean, maybe she wasn't an architect, but she would just give her sense of how she thought the color or the products or, you know, different size and scale.
Her opinion.
Materials and stuff like that?
Right. So, I've also think that there are other people in town who come from like a design standpoint, so I'm not quite sure I, you know, even interior design, but maybe they're design and lighting or design and, you know, I don't know. There's a, there was one woman who was interested, she had a window design business, you know, who I thought would've been excellent for it.
Right.
So, I think, I don't wanna get too narrow into interior, you could say interior or some sort of design background.
I mean, personally, I, I gave that same explanation to Bob about, just given the history of what was the makeup of the design.
I mean, I would've taken out landscape architect, because that seems repetitive. You know, it seems like now you got two landscape architects on there, you know.
Oh, you mean out of the, out of the resident?
Out of the resident one, yeah. Because you could then get a resident who has a lands, you can have one that's already appointed as a landscape architect, and then someone comes for you.
So, then, would you also take out background in architecture?
I do, because I think you want, you wanna have diversity.
Okay, so, so out of the, for the, for the resident one, you wanna take out, you think we take out architecture and landscape architecture, but leave in real estate development?
Design or interior, design stand...
Interior design, building construction.
Or some, yeah, but, does, does that person have to have, you know, her training in interior design, or what if they're another type of designer? Do you know what I mean? What if they're a light design, you know, what if they're in the field of lighting or something, you know?
I just think it should be an interested citizen, because if you're a designer, or some people are really good at design, they might not be licensed, and I think anyone who's interested, they're not gonna outweigh the members of the other board, but they might bring good comments, too.
It's, but it's not requiring licensure. It's just a background. So, if it's what they do, then...
I mean, I think with this, this role, this position, I mean, we can have these as guidelines, but first of all, we're gonna, we're counting on that we can find one of these people that have expertise in any of these things, and we may not. But I think it just should be in a, you know, whoever's applying or wants to be a part of that board, I mean, we can make decisions on appointing them case by case basis, don't you think?
Well, you certainly would, you certainly would be, but that board is just, there's a lot of heavy lifting on that board, and if you don't know what you're talking about, there's, there's no value added, if you don't have a background in this. You know, I mean, to this day, I still learn something every single one of those, and I comment to them, too. I'm like, I did, I did not know that. I did, never heard that term before. I, how do you spell that? How am I supposed to write this? So, I, I really think that you, I, I think it's imperative that you need to have some sort of background in, in design to be on a design review board.
What if we just weren't as prescriptive and just had with a related design background? And then we're not like picking and choosing certain, there may be ones we haven't even thought of, and that'll just give us the flexibility to have it so that it's related, but not necessarily as prescriptive as interior design or real estate.
Now, see, now, this is funny. I thought that you, that you all would've thought that I had too many in there and that you were gonna take out a couple. I can't, I can't guess what you're gonna do. But like I said, this was based on a review of, you know, Newton's had a design review committee, I mean, you know, some of the big towns that have seriously heavy duty design guidelines, and nobody just has, you know, like a resident at large. There's, they, they're all recommended that you, that you need to have some sort of background.
Well, I think to your point, it is one of the specialized committees, where you really should have an understanding, like finance, of what's gonna be sitting in front of you, you know. I can look at a building and say, I really like that one, or I really don't like that one. Beyond that, I, I can't offer much. So, it's, it's, I think it would be helpful to, I, I think Carrie's point is, is a good one, if we just, instead of identifying specific professions, you could say related to design of buildings and real estate or something like that, you know, rather than identifying specific niches of...
You know, and you always have the, I mean, whether you wanna look at it as an out or not, but I mean, it's in the bylaw now, and it's, and it's proposed to stay in there, you always have E. You know, a balance of representation as, as close as possible to this mix. So, I mean, that answers, I think, probably what you're talking about, too, Anthony, you know, along with Carrie, that if you, if you can't get somebody, you know, with that, with any of those backgrounds, then, you know, then you've got an out to, you know, to find someone as close as possible.
So, could we write it as one resident of the town with a background in design or commercial slash construction field, something like that? So, that's pretty broad, right?
About, I just wrote some language out of it. About?
Okay.
With a related background in real estate or building or, or building construction, design or building, real estate or building, design and construction.
Say that again with the...
With a related background in real estate or building, design and construction. Design or construction, sorry, I keep saying and. I meant to say or. So, that gives you real estate, design, real estate, construction, building, design, building, construction.
But in real estate, with the exception of the duplexes, I'd much rather have a commercial person on the board than just a, you know, residential.
I don't think you're, I don't think you're limited.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I don't think you're limited either way.
Because I think that would add value.
Not specifying.
Commercial, someone in commercial would add, don't you think, Kathy?
Well, I mean, a lot of, you know, since you've added duplexes, you, you now have a whole residential component, too.
Yeah, that's just, but it's just one small, it's not what we usually see before, as much as we see all the commercial.
But I think, I mean, I, I, I think building design or construction, I mean, I, that, that's very broad.
Right. Construction can be like some form of concrete, though.
Well, then hopefully you wouldn't appoint them.
Yeah.
You know, if that's...
Maybe they're, maybe they've been around longer than most of us.
That's true, too.
Like, maybe they've been around real estate development so much, they actually know that the color of their concrete's gonna go well with the proposed facade of that building.
What about historical commission? I noticed a lot of design reviews had someone from the historical commission, not to put them on the spot, maybe they don't want it, but because there are notes in here about, you know, strengthen the character of the downtown, encourage it, I don't know. And look at the historical side of it, because if you have a contractor...
But it's not, but it's not necessarily, as one of our architects points out...
Yeah.
It's not necessarily, you know, the, the designs that are coming forth aren't necessarily, you know, it's not prescriptive, it doesn't have to be a historical design, you know, it's not, it's not in Tucket, you know, where you say everything has to be gray, shingled.
Downtown Natick.
Where everything has to be brick.
Kathy, can you say that again one last time, because we've had three versions of this going around?
Of what you just said?
Yeah.
I mean, of what you kinda ended up with?
One resident of...
One resident of the town with a background in real estate or building design or construction. That's what I have. That's what I got from it.
Okay.
Not to get off topic, but what's downtown Natick and downtown Nantucket? They have a special, they have a historic district?
Yeah. The entire island, you don't even compare. It's just impossible. The entire island of Nantucket is a historic district, so. So, it's, it's not even design guidelines, it's designed, it's prescriptive, you have to do that.
So, the only thing I wouldn't want is to have someone who is in interior design not be considered because we don't classify them as building design. And yet, they've, there was someone on the board who added tremendous value for many years.
Do you wanna put a parenthetical interior or exterior up to the word building?
That's good.
Yeah.
How does everyone else feel about that?
I, I still think just with a related background is sufficient, but if the group feels differently, then I defer.
I think we've got, we've already got three experts. I think we're overthinking this.
Okay. If we can go back to the three versus five years, I would suggest five years, I mean, I would suggest three years, only for example, if you have someone on the board who's not able to attend after a certain period of time, you'd wanna be able to address it when they come up for renewal every three years, just because maybe their schedule's really busy or something.
And three years is what we have on our election cycle.
Yeah.
So, it's...
So, I'm in favor of keeping it for three years, not five.
You can, can anyone weigh in on that?
Three years.
Three, Carrie, three. Not Amy?
Yep, three's fine.
Three is. All right.
All right, and then, and then what's, how's Dee gonna read?
I, I agree with Anthony, I think we're overthinking it, because I've been on that board for so many years that you have to beg and plead for people to come on, so I don't wanna rule anybody out because they don't have the criteria, but...
That's probably how it gets to one interested and responsible citizen. Maybe you should just go back to that.
The baseline.
So, you, do you just wanna end it with a related background, period?
Yeah.
Everybody good with that?
I am.
Yeah. Yep, okay. With the related background, period, strike everything after.
So, so one resident of town with a related background?
That sounds like they're related to each other.
Only the background, so it's okay.
And then it's up to us to then decide, do we want, you know, and with the input of the planning, the chair maybe, what they need or what they could benefit from. I just had one other comment for this list, and it's regarding the two licensed architects. One thing that Tom mentioned at the last meeting was he looked up on whatever the system was to see how many were in North, how many were licensed in Northborough, and that didn't even mean they lived here, and it only, he only got a result of eight to ten. So, we've limited our pool to eight to ten, who may or may not even still live here, and now we're dedicating two spots to an extremely narrow pool, although I, I see the value in the two current architects, and I'm not looking to change that necessarily. I'm just wondering if, if for some reason we don't have the luxury of two, if one leaves or moves, and we bound ourselves to two rather than change the bylaw, what if we had, you know, one, either one licensed architect or, you know, something else? I don't, is there, maybe historical doesn't make sense, but just to not put us in the spot where we don't even have the pool to get to, should one of the current ones leave?
Well, I think, so having two, I think, is extremely important, because you kind of, you've got two different mindsets and ideas, and it's not just one person driving the directive of design. So, I think we should always have that goal. I mean, it doesn't mean we're always gonna be there, but we should always have that goal of having at least two.
Two architects.
Because again, I think that balance, that last one, that balance lets you off the hook if you couldn't find a second architect.
So, that would be the out?
Yeah. Yeah. So, that, you know, that, that's always, that's always your route, having that there, that it's, you know...
But is there something...
Whether you can't find an architect, whether you can't find a landscape architect, whether you can't find a resident with a related background.
Is there a subcategory, like an alternate to architect, a licensed architect, that would make sense so that if we were trying to keep that balance as close as possible, like, if you couldn't find two licensed architects, is there a next level down that still fits within that realm?
I, I don't know myself, but I can ask them. They're, they're meeting again next Friday.
Yeah, maybe they would know.
Yeah.
Because we're lucky that we have two, but I just wonder if, if one retires or moves, what do we, how do we find another replacement within a pool of eight people?
Maybe that's where they'd be degreed and out-licensed, you know, you could have your degree but not continue your license if you were retired.
Oh, yeah, I don't know. I, I don't know the field well enough to say, but I was just wanting to bring that up.
Yeah, so I can, I'll ask them.
Anything else on this one?
Yeah, okay.
What if it, the first paragraph, it said, preference for a board consisting of the following but not limited to. So, if you didn't have any architects, you could still find somebody who had a related background, and you could still proceed. Because the way it's worded, you might not, if you had all the other seats filled and no architects applied, you would only have three people on the board.
So, at, at the end of...
At the, at the end of the paragraph before, where it says, two licensed architects, you just put something that says, a membership consisting of but not limited to, or with preference given to the following disciplines. So, the guideline is set for this is what we want, but knowing that sometimes positions go unfilled for years, because there's nobody interested, let alone qualified and interested, you could end up with a two-member board.
It only happened once, and Michelle and I found someone.
We've been for a number of years on earthwork for four.
That's what you do.
I was on the hunt.
Changed the bylaw so that it can prove stuff with three. It happens on other boards, not necessarily design review, because it's so...
Okay. I'm good with that. Amy, you good with that?
Yeah, it sounds good.
So, what is it?
A membership consisting of...
What's coming out, what's staying in?
After the four-three-year terms.
Consisting of four members, consisting of four members with a preference given to the following disciplines.
But not limited to.
Right.
Consisting of but not limited to.
Okay.
All right, with a preference given to...
The following.
As opposed to as follows.
Well, that sounds like you kinda like the difference between Shell and...
So, Shell additionally consists of four members for three-year terms with a preference given to the following. Right?
Following disciplines, or following makeup, or...
But not limited to. But not limited to. We'll have a chance to review and tweak this further, once we have another draft.
Okay, so the next one.
Which has really got us all curious.
Why it's even on here.
No brainer.
Please. It's, it's.
Who doesn't like Christmas trees?
So this is, this is, Bob just wants some clarification in the zoning, because we have nothing about, it's, and it's, this, this can't be limited to Christmas trees.
Okay.
But, so that's why we call it holiday horticultural products.
Are you defining what the holiday season is? Because.
It can be any holiday. It can be whether you want to sell roses for Valentine's Day, lilies for Easter, Christmas trees.
Oh, that's so fantastic.
For.
Shamrocks.
So we have the summer.
Four-leaf clovers. Sure.
Apple, for apple first.
So, so anyways, it, I mean, Bob hasn't, you know, been here that long, but it has already come up in this town. And, and people questioned him about whether or not someone could sell Christmas trees. They were apparently offended by someone selling Christmas trees. So Bob's like, this is crazy. I'm not gonna be the person that shuts down a lemonade stand in town. So if we could put some parameters around it, so I did quite a bit of research for rural communities because towns around here don't, don't have this. And what Bob likes is, instead of the, my first easy one, a stand for the display of hor- horticultural products. Instead, he would like the outdoor sales, you know, what's on the bottom of page one. So the outdoor sales of holiday trees, wreaths, or similar products. An event of a temporary nature during the holiday season, we don't describe what holiday season, designed to provide for the outdoor sale of trees, wreaths, or similar holiday horticultural products. Such facilities would not include the use of a permanent structure designed to enclose such use. And then we go to the use table, because, you know, you now, we're now defining this, so now we have to put it someplace. So we both looked at, you know, where best in the use table. And we are putting it under, or proposing for you to put it under, in the business uses, under the trade section. And, and it would be labeled outdoor, say, what I haven't read, outdoor sales of holiday horticultural products. And just for starters, you know, we put it in all of the business districts as an allowed use and in the industrial district. And where we have had them in the past is, and again, this, you know, this could change from year to year. There is someone who routinely comes into the business west district. And then this year, we had someone in the highway business district. So.
I have some changes.
And business east, right, because Trump, that is, they sell holiday things, or that's considered their retail, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's all, that's part of what they, of what they do.
Okay.
So this is sort of, you know, your temporary, you know, roadside stand. But, you know, Bob goes and inspects them and, you know, obviously makes sure that, you know, there's, you know, they're, they're selling something so that there's parking, you know, adequate facilities at that time.
We're not just pulled over to the side of the road.
Right, right. So they, you know, they're physically using a parking lot or some sort of lot.
Is there a time limit for which they can do this?
We did not assign a time limit.
Because wouldn't this allow then somebody just to set up shop somewhere and stay open year-round?
I suppose so, but then, you know, the business that they're doing that on, you know, would have to show us that they, you know, no longer need those parking spaces.
Well, it's defined as an event of a temporary nature. Does that cover it, without defining?
But I'm thinking Andy, Anthony's thinking someone will just.
Exploit it.
Right.
Well, nothing that says they couldn't go from one holiday to the next, to the next, to the next, so.
I really, I really, you know, I, it, it hasn't, you know, I mean, we can really make this into a mountain, but.
Just wondering, do you just put in thirty, forty-five days of continuous use, and then that's it?
Yep, if you wanted to, in the definition, something like that. You know, we could put an event under the definition section on the bottom of one, an event of a temporary nature, you know, not to exceed thirty days or forty-five days. I don't know how long these Christmas tree people set up.
So it could be as much as thirty days. Is that per calendar year, though? Because if I want to sell flowers in the summertime, across the street from my office, somebody sets up a little kiosk at the top of the Harvey Industries driveway, and they sell these beautiful flowers there. That's all summer long.
Right.
And I assume that would fall under this.
No one's ever complained about that.
That's because they're selling flowers, right? Who, who could possibly be offended by flowers?
Who can complain about Christmas trees and someone's complaining about Christmas trees?
People who are offended by Christmas trees. But who's offended by flowers, right?
And this won't affect, like, the Vidian, or, yeah, like, because they're farms, right? Would agricultural be, they'd be.
Yeah, has not.
I just thought placing them in business, I don't want to exempt them.
There's some Christmas trees.
No, this is just, this is the guy who sets up the plywood, you know, A-frames, brings down trees from Nova Scotia and.
Lives in a trailer for a month.
So I think the problem with putting a time limit on it is that you do have some that are short, like Valentine's Day guy selling the flowers on the fourteenth on the side of the road, and then the Christmas tree guy who's thirty days, but then the flower lady who's like ninety days. And so how do you put your time limit?
Obviously not concerned about the flower lady so much, but other than, what is it that we're not considering that could come in that would be something we wouldn't want, somebody setting up all year-round? And then they could say, well, you've got this provision here that.
It's gonna come under horticultural, though. So what could somebody grow?
Okay, so.
That you wouldn't want to have sold.
Okay, fair enough.
That's not otherwise governed by another statute, such as marijuana or tobacco, right? So that's governed elsewhere, so, like. Can't think of anything else that somebody would grow. Well, I, while we contemplate putting a time limit on this, can you add the word temporary before the word outdoor, right after the small F? So that it's clear that we're talking about temporary, because it is. And then, in the, in, let's see, an event of a temporary nature during, instead of the holiday season, can you put any holiday season? Because you are including things like Valentine's Day and Mother's Day, I'm sure is gonna crop up as his Father's Day, and then Grandparents' Day, and then Administrative Professionals' Day.
Which Fred and I miss every year.
And so then, as we go along this line, to provide for the outdoor sale of, we should add the word flowers in there, just to protect the lady across the street at Harvey Industries?
I'm sorry, where should I add that?
Somewhere around trees, wreaths, flowers, others similar.
So you don't think similar holiday horticultural products covers it?
I don't know, if the rest of the board thinks it does, that's fine. I just wouldn't want anybody to look at this and say, oh, I can't sell my flowers.
Okay, so for the outdoor sale of trees, wreaths, flowers, or similar holiday horticultural products?
And then in the table of use.
Add, put in temporary, is that what, is that what you said?
Yeah, right, so, and you also put in the word Christmas, so we should.
Oh, that's, that's, I should have put that straight through, just what's in red.
Yeah, if you just put the same, the same title as what you have rated after the F. But you didn't put in holiday horticultural.
Because we kind of abbreviated in the use table, but.
I like the word horticultural in there, because it's clear that we're not selling anything else, like. So on F, on the, on page one, after the word similar, if you put horticultural there. And I'd be satisfied with that. Amy, any other changes to this one?
No, it sounds good to me.
Michelle?
I'm good.
Carrie?
Sounds good.
Anthony?
I'm good.
All right. Thank you for letting me dominate that one.
All right, then the next article is for the ZBA, they'll, they'll be.
We'll pass over that one.
Yeah. And then the next and last article is about the electronic message centers. So the, what, what I did, spent a lot of time with Bob before he was sick, and then also today on this. And the only thing that Bob had as a suggestion to add is what I have shown in red here. So the, overall, and then if you want to go through this, you know, line by line, however you want to do this, but the, there's a standard definition for electronic message center. So there's, in my opinion, there's no sense in trying to, you know, make one that's unique to Northborough. So there's two sign agencies out there, that, I think it's called the United Sign Council, and. You know, they, they set the standards for, for all of this. So one is called the International Sign Association, and then the other one is the United States Sign Council. So originally, Bob thought it would just be very easy if we just referenced those two, and not, not even put in any of these basic requirements. And then the more we looked into it, there, what we have here, what, what we presented as number eleven, under D, is, is the very standard language that appears in towns that have updated their zoning bylaws about electronic message centers. And then the example here, and Bob tested this out, as, as I did also. But that formula is how to measure where he would measure. The, if there was a question about the intensity of a sign, that's a proven formula that is suggested by the sign industry, and then is incorporated into other towns in Massachusetts, into their bylaws. And the. So that's, if you sort of want to absorb, absorb that, and then I can tell you what we changed in red. And then the, on the next page is just the reference to the highway business and the industrial. The two, the two zoning districts that you talked about at prior meetings, where it would be okay to have electronic message centers.
Now, wouldn't business district, isn't that like downtown business, business east, business, business west?
I can include that, but you didn't want that.
But the way I read it, it says signs and business districts. Like, which ones are the business districts?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, well, you have to go to that section. And so that, that section is only highway business. The general section is called signs and business districts, and then there's one, two, three, four, five, six, you know.
Yes, that's highway.
Each one of the different zoning districts. So one C, one A refers to highway business, and then H three refers to industrial.
For free-standing signs.
And the, if you go back on to, into the, on page three, what's in red is what we wanted to prevent was, because right now, you know, changeable copy is, the way our definition reads today, is changeable copy is either manual letters, you know, like the CVS, or electronic. So, but, you know, you all talked about that you wanted something separate for electronics, so that's where the electronic message center comes from. So then what we wanted to do was sort of not let someone double-dip, that they could have a changeable copy sign and also an electronic sign. So we want to change the definition of changeable copy, so that it's only the manual signs. So in the other districts, you know, downtown business, business east, business west, and business south. Right now, all under the free-standing sign, someone can add changeable copy, and so we left that alone. But that changeable copy now has to be that it's manual. And because you only wanted electronic messages in highway business and industrial, the electronic only would be attached to a free-standing sign, and it could not be the manual changeable copy. Does that make sense or not?
I'm confused.
Do you have to follow along in the, in the bylaws when you do this?
Yeah.
So D gives the basic, your general requirements are signs. And so this first change under basic requirements, it refers to, the original version refers to both electronic and manual change on the change, the copy. So by changing it to remove the reference to electronic, you're really restricting everybody with a free-standing sign everywhere except highway business and industrial. They can only do basically what CVS has, where you gotta take the poll and pop up the letter, and take down the letter. You're taking away the electronic message boards. I shouldn't say you're taking it away, you're prohibiting any new ones from coming in in those districts.
But do we limit, so, for example, LED, does that, would that be allowed? So when we talk about manual, I mean, you could say, instead of not popping something up, you needed to type something and hit enter.
That's what an electronic message center is.
Okay, so.
That it has to be a sign that utilizes computer-generated messages or some other electronic means of changing copy. So whether they're at home with the keyboard, it's, you know, somehow attached, or, you know, they have to do it from the store, or.
Right.
But, so, so that, that's the, that's a standard definition of, like, in most of the bylaws that I, that I looked at.
Okay.
Yeah, so then when you, then you go down, the, we're adding in to that same basic requirement section, the illumination standards, which will, which deals with, well, how bright can that sign be, and how do we measure the brightness of that sign? And that's the formula for determining that. And then moving into subsection G, which then start talking, this then starts talking about like, well, okay, so when we go through the districts, what's gonna be allowed and what's not gonna be allowed. G deals with business districts. G one C one A deals with the highway business district. And that, we're specifically allowing the electronic message centers there. And subsection H deals specifically with industrial, we're gonna allow it there as well. So that's how we identify where we're gonna allow these electronic signs from now on, assuming this passes.
And don't ask me to do square roots.
I have a calculator for that.
Let's hope there be no math.
Yes, thanks to Fred, he pointed out. There's a button for that. And I'm sitting there going, oh, my God, I have to, I've got to figure out.
Turn the.
From ninth grade.
Sideways, right, the, the financial calculator pops up, and you could do anything, yeah.
So Kathy, for clarification, this is only for standalone signs. This is not for someone who has open neon sign in their window, or, you know, milk on seal in their window.
Right, right. This is just for a free-standing sign.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, the size of it isn't changing or anything.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't propose any changes, because that's not what we had originally talked about, but, yeah, so it's, so all, any other kind of sign is still covered, you know, by the zoning, you know, elsewhere in that sign section.
All right, anybody have any questions about the, that last article, regarding the sign changes, the changes to the sign bylaw, rather?
So the gas stations would be grandfathered in, right?
Gas stations are exempt.
Exempt, okay. I know Franny hasn't said that yet, but I didn't.
In Massachusetts.
You don't have to say it.
But, but the specific sign down at, well, actually, it's not a gas station, but at, like, at the Moes, that, that electronic message board that he has, that would be grandfathered, because that's in the business east, and you're not allowing them in the business east. So that, that would be grandfathered.
Just to clarify, so anybody who has one today is grandfathered.
Yes.
That's, no more?
Yep.
Assuming that we can pass this by law.
Assuming, yeah, of course.
Or up until the time it passes that town meeting, they can go and get one right now.
Yeah, okay.
So, so the process from here is, um, and I, I know it's.
I just had a question, actually. So in terms of like hours and animation and things like that, that's all defined elsewhere, it doesn't need to be defined here?
Yes, yep, like hours, um, the, under the basic requirements in our zoning bylaw, it starts on page 100, and goes over 101. No, no sign may be illuminated between midnight and 6:00 AM, except signs identifying police or fire, or essential public services.
I mean, if it's animated and bright, did we want to change, reconsider that midnight time, or, I mean, that's a whole new, I don't know.
Do we allow animation? I don't think we do.
We don't allow animation in a, in another piece of the bylaw, but if we have a bright light until midnight, is that what we want?
Well, midnight to 6:00 AM.
That's where the math comes in.
Oh, there's math, so that's where the square roots come in?
Yeah, that tells a building inspector where to check the intensity of the light at how far away. So it, it regulates how bright it can be at a certain distance away, based upon the size of the sign.
So number seven of the basic requirements says that no sign may be illuminated, no sign may be illuminated between 12:00 midnight and 6:00 AM, except, and then there's your exceptions. So, are you, is that one you're concerned about, you want to push back that time?
I, I'm wondering how we, is, is there a way to make a time difference for the illuminated signs, the electronic signs, considering that they can be very bright, and if I lived across the street from it at midnight, if this were, even if there was some calculation, I'm sure I wouldn't want it lit across from my house. Is there any way to, wasn't it nine, or 10, or somewhere in a different, I thought I saw something different in this bylaw somewhere, or illuminated, is that not true? I don't know, but. Well, is this a good, I mean, I don't want to open up a whole new bylaw for it, but is there a way to, do we, are we happy with midnight? That's just my opinion, I don't know, is that what we want for mid, up until midnight, these can be lit? Maybe in the districts they're in, I don't know if they're necessarily across from any houses or anything.
So you're just referring to, uh, Business Highway and Industrial?
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I can't think of anything, really.
Maybe not, maybe not relevant.
There's not much industrial.
Well, I mean, there's three different areas for Industrial, we Bartlett Street.
Southwest cut off.
Southwest cut off, and then up by 290. Yeah, kind of Whitney, Barefoot.
If we change the time for these types of signs, those that currently exist, I know the use is grandfathered, but can we impose a new time restriction on them?
Um, well, it, um, no, no, because it's, it's, you're changing, you know, who's, it's like, it, you know, you get your place in time. You know, so today, if you have a sign, the bylaw says you can have it lit up until midnight. And if you're going to change that at a town meeting, it's any new sign going forward.
Any new sign, all right, so now, okay, so it almost doesn't make sense to impose a different time, because now the zoning inspector's got like five signs that can go midnight to six off, and then three others, so it'll be like 10 to 6, and.
The ZBA decision for the dentist actually put a time on it, it was nine or 10 o'clock.
Maybe that's where you're thinking about that, Carrie.
Yeah, it's in that decision, and, but I don't know if it's in the new decision when he moved, would that follow him? I don't know.
It wouldn't follow him, it would, it's, but I, I can check the.
It was the original decision that he did have a time limit on his sign.
And that may have been because of where he's located, because it was, you know, it was, it was so busy, I, I don't, I don't remember, but. So, the, so going forward, the, um, your, your next meeting is February
5.
Um, 5th, and the, um, the, everything, um, as far as staff and, and boards needs to, you know, according to the calendar, needs to be to the, um, town administrator by the 4th. And so it's easy enough, what, what I can do is, is I'll just reserve spots, and then, you know, you can talk about, you know, any language changes you want to make, um, on the, at your meeting on the 5th. And then we will have spoken to the zoning board of appeals by then, and, you know, I can report back at your meeting on the 5th, and then as to whether or not those two articles would go. So, no, we're good, in other words.
Okay.
You know, I'll, I'll, the, like I said, basically like the placeholders.
So there was only, there was one thing not in this packet that we talked about several times, and you had asked us to think about, and that was whether or not we remove the waivers. And that was something you said, well, we need to decide, are we ever going to approve a waiver, at this point, you need to decide, are we ever going to approve a waiver or not, because that would dictate whether or not it makes sense to go and remove that waiver from the bylaw. So, I mean, I personally don't think that, I see a circumstance where I would approve a waiver, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but again, I think the spirit of that was just we're wasting people's time and money if we're never going to approve a waiver as a current board. So I don't know if that's, it just wasn't in here, so I didn't know the status of.
I think it's, I mean, just from my notes, um, not defending myself, but my notes, at the last meeting, it was Michelle, when you were talking about this, that Michelle thought that it was too early, that it's only been there for a year. So you really don't have a history yet.
We've only had one applicant.
Um, but, I mean, that's, that's up to you, but that's why I didn't
Oh, I see.
Put anything forward, because I just remember that conversation, but.
I'm not inclined, because it gives the appearance that, we've only, well, let's switch this, right, we've only had one application in front of us. And a majority of the town voted in the waivers. So, I'm not sure that we're in a position quite yet to say, we're never, ever going to use these, so let's get rid of them. I think that we have to give it time. We may never get another applicant with a waiver, but we might get an applicant where the waiver makes more sense. So, I, the town, town said, yeah, let's have it, didn't they? Let's, let's give it a chance to do something.
I agree, I think I'd remove it. Because I went to the meeting at Design Review where Judy Barrett was like, who approved that waiver? Never would have recommended that, it's just going to cause a rift between the planning board, developers, you're wasting time and money. I mean, I agree, I think we should remove the waiver.
Well, the planning board, I think, is going to be divided on this issue. We could take a vote. You certainly can do a straw poll, you know, I, I, it is, I think it's just far too soon to be pulling out that which we just put in.
I know, but I think in this.
And, and I also have this, I have a, I have a problem with saying, I am never, ever, ever going to do that. That means that you have already made a decision on every application that has not even come before you yet. And I don't think that's fair to any applicant who wants to come to this town and do something. I think it's, I think it's grossly unfair, actually, and this board voted, as a board, to put that into the bylaw language to go to town meeting last year. And you were on that board, and I was on that board, and Michelle was on that board. And I, I don't think that it's appropriate to sit here and say, I am never, ever, ever going to allow a waiver. Because you've basically damned every applicant that might be seeking one, without even knowing what the circumstances are, and what the conditions are, and whether or not it is appropriate. So I, I will not support removing that from the bylaw. So if you want to bring it forward, you guys can do that, but you're doing it with a divided board. And history says that when planning board, um, presents amendments that are divided, that, from board divided, then, you know, the likelihood of success isn't necessarily 100%. So you might, it might fly, it might not.
Right, but it's, it's letting the town decide, I guess.
But you, but what you're basically doing is you are on camera announcing to everybody in the town of Northborough, don't come here with a waiver, because I'm going to deny it, before you've even seen what the purpose of that waiver, why they want to present that waiver on these duplexes.
Well, that's what Judy actually said to do, she said, if you believe in the reasons, that there are valid reasons for creating the bylaw with the exact frontage, then the waiver is senseless, and you need to put, you should either take it out, or put the word on the street that you're never going to approve it, because you're wasting people's time and money, so why are you, why are you bothering to, to put that in there? And, and those are her words at a Design Review Committee meeting, I wasn't the only one that heard it, so.
She did say that.
I don't think it's a matter of, um, saying, I think it's a matter of believing in the original bylaw, not saying that you're not going to listen to an application with a fair mind.
The bylaw passed with the waiver in it, by a majority of the town. You're now saying to the majority of the town, I don't care what you said. I don't think, I'm telling you what I'm saying, like, that's what you're saying when you do that.
I, I think just that, I, and the, the context, I think, is a little out of place with, um, with Judy Barrett. I mean, we, you know, this board in this town has used Judy, you know, in the past as a consultant, the Design Review Committee's working with her right now. Certainly foresee that, you know, this, this town would continue to use Judy. But she wasn't, she wasn't part of that, part of the process. You know, she wa, she wasn't at that planning board meeting, um, you know, where it was first presented, she wasn't at the public hearing. So I think, you know, I, I, I just, um, and I, you know, really respect Judy's opinion. But I think it, you know, we just have to put it in the right context, because she wasn't part of any of the discussion that the planning board had about whether that waiver should be included or not. That's, I just kind of want to put that frame around it. It's up to you what you do as a board, but.
So for me, because it's 10:05, um, I, if, I would much rather meet again or discuss it at our next meeting than to make a decision tonight.
Do we have to have a placeholder, though, because it's going to be after the 4th?
Oh.
It's, don't, don't worry about that.
And, you know, if, if we're basing the, um, discussion based on a discussion that a consultant we hired, um, gave a statement, maybe it would make the board feel more comfortable if we went back to that consultant and asked her to rethink it through and maybe get back to us again, because she's still.
She was no longer employed by you doing the duplexes, they were done, it was done. And then it was, it was after she was completed with her contract that, you know, the waiver was then, or waiver language was presented to the board, and then you, you know.
No, I know, I know the meeting, she was at the meeting when we started, when we were talking about duplexes, the bylaw, the Design Review standards for duplexes, that's when she came up. I know that, I'm just saying that if, if everyone in the board, um, that the other two members of the board are concerned because of her statement, I don't think it hurts to go back to a consultant and say, at this meeting, you know, you had concerns about it this way, you know, could you, could you help? I mean, I don't know, maybe she won't, because she's not under contract, and she can't do it, maybe that's how things work in town government, I don't know. But I'm telling, that's what Carrie and Amy heard, I also heard the same thing. And so that's where they're thinking now, should we revisit it right now before town meeting? I just think it's like late at night, we can't have a healthy discussion about it, nor do I want to have a healthy discussion about it at 10:05 either. Right?
I'm with you.
You know, I'd much rather have another discussion about it at the next meeting and table it to the next meeting. It's easy enough to put a one-line item on town meeting floor, it's not a big thing, I just, I don't want to talk about it tonight. I don't have enough to think about.
I just have one more thing, too, before we close.
Is this?
It's very important.
Is it new?
No, it's not new.
Okay.
Very important, because, um, we skipped over the non-conforming, and I noticed that, um, Kathy had made changes to it, so I want to read it over. But I also did the same thing, is I had made some changes to what she had written, because we haven't talked since the last time changes were made. And I just want to pass it out and look at it, and maybe get a chance to talk to Kathy before she goes to zoning. I'm not asking we talk about it tonight.
I'm, I'm not having any conversations outside of a public meeting.
Okay, then I'll read it tonight. When I proposed the changes in non-conforming uses, I had talked about taking out the change or substantial extension of use. But when I noticed the one that was drafted, that was still in there. So I just wanted to ask why, you know, the reasoning behind it, because even as you saw tonight, for the people in front of us, the applicant and the neighbors, I think leaving the change or substantial extension of use is, um, what I was trying to change. Um, we, we talked about it at ZBA, we talked about staying the same or conforming.
Did you go, the, the, what I passed out tonight is the corrected version?
Yep.
That has that crossed out?
It's still under there on number one, though, right?
The, um, the, Teresa, I know you don't want to get into this discussion, so I don't.
Because the, frankly, the zoning board of appeals would have every right to come back and say, we're not supporting this, and now, now we're at 10:10, talking about changes that might be completely irrelevant, because if the ZBA doesn't want this change, we're not putting it forward as a board. So I think we need to wait for the ZBA, we have your changes, we can review them, and we will have time on the 5th to make sure that.
Okay.
We'll do it.
But I could talk to a ZBA member on my own, or two or three, because I just, I just think we need time to talk about it, and you said if the ZBA doesn't approve, we can't go forward as a board. Well, it's under our purview to bring forth bylaw.
Do you, you, so you want to change the way the ZBA does their job, even though they have said, please don't change the way we do our job?
Well, let's see what they said. But I do think, I mean.
That's what you're, that's what you're doing, if you, if the ZBA comes back and says, we don't want this, and you say, we're going to do this anyway, that's what you're doing.
Okay, I'll think about it.
Okay.
But I do think we should think about what I mentioned in my memo, and look at this, and.
So the ZBA is meeting on Tuesday, is that correct?
Yep.
So and then, so at our next meeting, we'll get response from them on, on all these, okay?
Yep, and then, just also keep in mind, this then goes to town council, as to whether or not any of these changes, you know, can even be made. And, and, um, the, the, the way the zoning is written right now on non-conforming mirrors exactly what the state statute says. So I really don't even know if we can do any changes, but that's where town council will guide us.
Okay.
So the state statute has changed since 2008, or?
Oh, okay.
Because ours have changed since 2008.
This, this, ours mirrors exactly what it says in the state statute.
Okay. Or adjourned?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded, and I.
You can't second it.
I can, I just.
Second.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right, David.